Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I will call the September 10th Select Board meeting to order. I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda, so we'll accept it as written and move to announcements.
This meeting is being video and audio recorded, and we have a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is in September for the town of Nantucket, and I think somebody is online from Fairwoods to read it.
We have Rachel Meriwether.
Aye.
Hi, Rachel. Go ahead and read your proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas with September being recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, the Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition invites our communities, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, and allies to join in helping to destigmatize mental health and take proactive action towards suicide prevention. We seek to raise awareness and visibility of mental health and suicide prevention resources in our communities and help connect individuals with the appropriate support and services. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas, with the average of 132 suicide deaths daily, and each one directly impacting 100 additional people, including friends, service members, family, social media connections, and neighbors, we know a significant number of individuals have been impacted by suicide. And whereas, Nantucket's suicide rate stands at 20.9 per 100,000 versus the state of Massachusetts' suicide rate of 9.5 per 100,000, we recognize the need to create hope through action by changing the narrative locally. And whereas, our local Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition works hard to spread the word about prevention, awareness, education, and action through trainings, forums, and events in our region. And whereas, the town of Nantucket publicly places its full support behind the Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition and those who work in the field of suicide prevention and research, mental health, education, and law enforcement on a daily basis. And whereas, we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of each other. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Nantucket Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the town of Nantucket, signed this 10th day of September 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Do we want to take a motion?
I would move that we adopt this proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thanks again.
Thanks, everyone.
We have another proclamation for declaring September 2025 Climate Change Awareness Month in the town of Nantucket, and our sustainability programs manager, Vince Murphy, will read it for us.
Very kind. Can you hear me okay? Can't hear me at all? Okay, you can. All right. So Leah Hill, the Coastal Resilience Coordinator, should be here, but she's actually at a different event, which is in this list. So Climate Change Awareness Month is in good hands tonight with her giving a presentation over at the yacht club, I believe. So this is from the Coastal Resilience Advisory Committee, proclamation, "September 2025 is Climate Change Awareness Month for Nantucket, whereas in 2020, the Select Board proclaimed September as Climate Change Awareness Month for the first time. And whereas, in 2022, the Select Board endorsed the first Nantucket Coastal Resilience Plan, and 26 out of 40 of the town's Coastal Resilience Plan recommendations are in development, underway, complete, or ongoing within three and a half years of the CRP being endorsed. And whereas, the town of Nantucket recognizes that climate change and rising sea levels pose a significant and increasing threat to Nantucket as outlined in various state and federal scenarios, as well as local sea level rise observations at the NOAA tide gauge on steamboat wharf. And whereas, the Select Board formed the Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee in part to assist with obtaining community feedback on climate change and sea level rise. And whereas, the town of Nantucket, through a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, developed a resilient Nantucket toolkit for adapting historic structures for sea level rise. And whereas, the Select Board adopted and updated local sea level rise scenarios, the NOAA high scenario, and best available flood data from the Massachusetts Coastal Flood Risk Model. And whereas, the voting community has allocated $3.8 million for Coastal Resilience Planning Fund since 2020. And whereas, the town of Nantucket Natural Resources Department, through the Office of Coastal Zone Management Resiliency Grant, began the planning process to reduce flood risk on Easy Street, the number one priority for the Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee. And whereas, the town of Nantucket, in partnership with the Nantucket Islands Land Bank and Remain, allocated funding and received multiple grants to begin the planning process for Francis Street Beach Improvement Project to reduce risk to Washington Street. And whereas, the town of Nantucket Brand Point Shellfish Hatchery has ongoing dive surveys -- they just completed those this week -- and monitoring programs to observe and document climate change impacts to Nantucket's shellfish and eelgrass populations to further support the town's climate impact observations. And whereas, island organizations are hosting a series of educational events in September 2025 featuring climate change topics, including a coastal resilience kayak tour with the Natural Resources Department and the Nantucket Land and Water Council, the Fulgers Marsh Salt Marsh Walk with the Nantucket Conservation Foundation, native landscaping tour with the Nantucket Conservation Foundation, the Third Annual Climate Change Summit with the Linda Loring Nature Foundation and the Nantucket Conservation Foundation -- that is currently ongoing as we speak in a different venue where Leah is -- the Climate Change Impact Nature Walk with the Linda Loring Nature Foundation, ecologist in training, phenology basics with Linda Loring Nature Foundation, and the Long Pond Kayak Tour with Linda Loring Nature Foundation and the Nantucket Land and Water Council. The Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee calls upon the Select Board to proclaim September 2025 Climate Change Awareness Month for the town of Nantucket. We, the Select Board, you, and of the town of Nantucket in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby officially proclaim the month of September 2025 as Climate Change Awareness Month, and do hereby encourage all residents to learn more about the threats of climate change and sea level rise and planning efforts underway to increase community resilience, signed this day, the 10th of September 2025, and it bears the chair's signature line.
Thank you.
Approval?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Vince. Okay, next up. Oh, well, are there any opening Select Board announcements or comments? Okay. We do have some responses to questions that were raised under public comment at our last meeting on August 20th, so I will read those now. "In response to community concerns expressed recently during public comment about long-term vehicle parking, under Town Code 375-12H, no vehicle may remain in the same parking spot for more than 96 hours when no posted signs indicate otherwise. A vehicle is considered continuously parked if it has not been moved more than at least 50 feet before the time limit expires. Vehicles that are properly registered and have been moved within the 96-hour limit cannot be ticketed. If you believe a vehicle has exceeded the time limit or may be abandoned, please call the police department's dispatch center. An officer will be sent to investigate." Next, Veronica Bonet, "Is the Select Board more interested in executing the Healey Administration's energy plan than ensuring the conservation of Nantucket and its waters?" The town response is, "No, the town has consistently advocated for a balance between offshore wind development and protecting Nantucket's historic community sense of place and environment." Number two, from Veronica Bonet, "What colors were the Vineyard Wind turbines painted? The FAA requires turbines higher than 699 feet to be painted purely white, which is not what is in the Good Neighbor Agreement, and I'd like to know what they ultimately painted them." I think we found out that they did paint them the color that we requested after this was printed. Town response, oh, sorry. "The Section 106 Memorandum of Agreement provides that Vineyard Wind must paint the wind turbines an off-white gray color, no lighter than RAL 9010 pure white and no darker than RAL 7035 light gray to reduce visual contrast during daylight hours on historic properties. The turbines must be painted in this manner prior to commencing commercial operation." And they did follow that.
Yep.
"The town attorneys have reached out to Vineyard Wind multiple times when we're waiting our response," which we got. The town has contacted Boem -- okay, sorry, I'm just being repetitive now on this.
Number three, what evidence does the Select Board have?
Oh, sorry. "What evidence does the Select Board have that the FAA has issued a determination of no hazard for the 853-feet turbines?" Town response, "The town has contacted Boem and the FAA for information responsive to this request, but has not received a response." Okay. Next up, there is public comment for items otherwise not on our agenda for discussion. If anyone would like to come to the mic or raise their hand online.
Hi, sorry, I've never done this before. Thanks for your time.
Just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Leah Mosher, and I'm here to voice my concern on Nantucket's deer population and their effects on public health and our right to grow food. After years of deer spring in my yard every night, it sadly no longer works. They just use our yard like a highway. But back to the point, everyone should be able to grow at least some of their own food, yet that right, that basic right seems to be under threat, and it seems we have given our right to farm up just to protect our deer population. Food insecurity is a big topic right now, and the easiest way, I feel, is to access healthy food is to be able to grow it yourself. Gardening, like everybody knows, is an experiment, but if you can't even experiment, how can you even begin to learn? Growing food like fruits and vegetables without eight-foot-tall fencing is impossible with a deer population this high, and fences, sprays, and repellents are expensive, wasteful, and not an effective long-term solution. Even more concerning is the burgeoning public health risk of lone star ticks. These deer are their keystone hosts for lone star ticks, which spread alpha-gal syndrome, which I'm sure you all know. Our current deer population is actively and exponentially increasing that risk here, and it is really concerning to me. I hope that the Select Board will work to expand our ability to grow foods in our yards, on our patios, and on our porches, and help our community ensure access to sovereign, homegrown, healthy food, and defend every resident's right, no matter whether if they have 10 acres or a front porch, to safely and effectively use their right to farm. In the public health sphere, I urge the public, the Select Board, to take immediate action before this problem gets any worse than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some hands up online, starting with Megan Perry.
Thank you, Dawn. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, excellent. I don't know if you missed it, but I asked quite a few questions at the public comment section, what was it, three weeks ago, regarding our aquifer and PFAS and drilling wells? And I just didn't see any of those questions answered, so I figured I'd highlight that. My next comment was, "Is there any way to bring back a wee bit of a user-friendly town website?" And maybe it's not user-friendly by design, maybe it just seems like it's an impossible website to try to use, follow, get agenda, meeting minutes, anything like that, if you're not sitting on a laptop. So I'm just curious if we could bring back a website that's a little bit more user-friendly? And I know other people have kind of asked that question before. My next question to the board is, "I have a FOIA request that's been sitting out for almost a year now. I've appealed it to the state. The state's requested that the town provide the documents. We go back and forth and back and forth. Yes, we'll get it to you." It's almost a year out now. I was hoping the Select Board could maybe help get that information to me and resolve this a little bit sooner. And then my last question was, "I'm a little confused by the Select Board not renewing the food pantry's location, but then Select Board members are now promoting nourish Nantucket, and I'm confused about the removal of the food pantry downtown, but then pitching another organization or nonprofit. I didn't know if somebody could just clarify that for me at some point. I know you don't answer questions at meetings, but that's what I had for tonight. So thank you so much."
Thank you. Next up, we have Rebek Duham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank Director Miramontes and the Health Department. It was really exciting to see that the GOV OS portal has been updated to will now allow 2026 short-term rental permit renewals. So thank you so much for getting that done. I have a few questions related to this topic. First, in response to a June 4th public question, the Select Board indicated that on September 1st, 2025, emails would go out to registered SDR operators who asked them to renew their permits for 2026. Is there a revised target date for sending these emails? They have not apparently gone out yet. Question two, "It would be great for the town to publicly announce the start of 2026 SDR permit application and renewal and remind operators that the registration deadline is November 1st. Would the town please consider doing so through island media, such as The Current and The Enquirer and Mirror?" Question three, "At the August 21st, 2025 Board of Health meeting, Director Miramontes mentioned that some applications for SDR permits had been rejected. Would the town please advise, first, the number of SDR permits now granted to date since the inception of the program in 2024, the number that have been rejected to date, and the reason or reasons permit applications have been rejected? In particular, I think the citizenry would love to hear to this extent to which any permit applications have been rejected because of invalid classes of owners, such as real estate investment trusts." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Emmy Kilvert.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Emmy Kilvert, I just quickly wanted to ask you all in regards to the letter I read on behalf of Nantucket Neighborhoods First at the July 23rd meeting, when we might expect a response to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none. We have no new business. Approval of minutes warrants impending contracts. Are there any questions? Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, move approval of all four.
I have one question about the irrigation, and it was $397,000. Was that irrigation and, you know, and what was it for? We were adding $30,000 to it?
Okay, this came up earlier today. "The contract amendment adds $29,725 to the original contract amount of 367,761. And this is a contract for the engineering and landscape architectural design of the additional soccer field in the Nobedear Athletic Complex between the existing turf field and the Nobedear Farm Road. Since executing the original contract, we asked them to add to their scope, which it wasn't included in the original, for the design of a second irrigation well and integration into the existing irrigation system. This requires hydrogeologic and groundwater data collection and design of the well pump, as well as the piping and valving required to connect to the existing and proposed expansion zones of the irrigation system at the field complex. This will add redundancy and increase capacity to the irrigation system, which is critical to the long-term health of the grass playing surface."
It just seems like a lot of money. I remember on the Delta Fields, you know, John Bartlett punching a well, "Oh, we just need as much water as we can get." I don't remember it being $400,000 to put a huge well to run a field, but run four fields. It was a long time ago, so we'd have to multiply it many times. But I just feel like, at some point, we need to have a discussion. It just seems to me there's got to be a way to get some of these expenses into some realm of reasonableness. It just, anyway, I'm going to vote for this, but I have my reservations, and I'd like to think at some point we have a summit or something to find a way to not spend millions on everything. Thank you. Oh, one other question, sorry. On the Weston Sampson on the build-out, was that delay on their end or on our end? Do we know?
I don't think it was a delay. I think it was when the build-out analysis was presented, there were some additional questions, and they're doing additional work to answer them.
All right, thanks.
So, did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. And I will say, like I said earlier, we're going to have a lot to discuss during our strategic planning session, but our goals. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Next up, we have some gift donations acceptances for the fire department. Does anybody want to read those?
And I'll just note that the cheapest here, if anybody has any questions.
Madam Chair, I'll read it. A gift of $250 from the Boston Foundation, quote, "to provide food and entertainment support for the Nantucket Fire Department Rescue Squad, ensuring the squad directly benefits while preparing to respond to emergencies in the community." Second one is a gift of $5,000 from the Paco Ma Homeowners Association, quote, "to purchase testing equipment for the testing of dry hydrant systems that exist throughout the island. I would make a motion to accept all gifts for their designated purposes and send letters of thanks to the donors."
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Next up, Citizen Departmental Committee Requesting Reports. Number one, we have the Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife overview of extending the deer hunting season on Nantucket.
We have Martin, where'd he go?
Martin Fian.
Online from the Mass Division of Fish and Wildlife. He's the deer and moose biologist.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so good evening, everyone. So I am Martin Fian, and I essentially oversee all deer management and research for the state of Massachusetts. Before I begin, just because there was the opening comment from some in the public about the issues with farming and deer, I just wanted to recommend and encourage anyone from Nantucket that's dealing with any kind of ag damage issues to reach out to me directly. We have several options that are available, and we can talk through exactly what options would fit best for your individual situation. In terms of deer management, there are a number of reasons why it's really critical that we actually manage deer. The biggest things in terms of the driver for the agency really is around ecosystem management and conservation of our forest lands around the state of Massachusetts. And overall, when you have high deer abundances, you can have major impacts on ecosystems, biodiversity, and lots of the other wildlife within each of these areas based on the impacts of deer from overbrowsing. On top of that, you have the direct impacts on agriculture. You have human safety issues with vehicle collisions, as well as the growing issues with public health around tick-borne illness. On Nantucket, there's a particular impact that is sort of unique, which is around the additive impact to coastal erosion. In many of the areas around the island, the high deer abundance is at a point where the bedding activity, as well as the movement of deer along deer trails throughout the island, helps to denude a lot of the beach vegetation that is so critical to slow in coastal erosion, as well as the deer trails along many of the cliffside edges create cleave points that accelerate a lot of the coastal erosion that you are all very familiar with around the island. And so it really creates an additive requirement of trying to address the deer abundance issues that really impact Nantucket at this point. Across the entire state, we manage deer across 15 wildlife management zones, and we use models that utilize data from hunter harvest, and all of the data that is collected comes from harvested deer. So effectively, areas that aren't harvested aren't being sampled, and so effectively, our deer densities are really floors, because the areas that aren't having hunter harvest are not being subject to that harvest-based mortality, and effectively would have far higher deer abundance. In most places, the true abundance in areas close to hunting are effectively two to three times as high. In Nantucket, it's likely even beyond that, because you don't have the additional mortality of predation that exists on the mainland in absence of coyotes. And you can see in the bottom right-hand corner there with both Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket having the highest abundances in the state. Across the entire state, we've had a rising harvest, and we regularly are having record deer harvest now almost every year. But all of that is actually in the context of declining hunter participation, as the number of hunters has declined significantly. This showing since 2012, but if you took this back to 1990, the hunting population was almost double what it currently is. And so we're taking effectively more and more deer with fewer and fewer hunters, and so that creates a really difficult challenge of how you get those declining number of hunters to take more deer. Zooming into eastern Massachusetts, you can see with the orange line up top, that is Wildlife Management Zone 14, which is Nantucket, and the rapidly increasing density that's continued now for several decades. If you go back to the early 2000s, Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket were very similar densities, and now Nantucket is significantly higher than where Martha's Vineyard is. And the harvests as well at this point have density, or have total harvests that now exceed those of the 2004, 2005 season, when there was a special hunt that we'll talk about shortly to increase the harvest that year. And now we have higher harvests throughout just our regular season due to the increasing deer densities, even in light of having fewer hunters actually in the landscape on Nantucket now. So with all of this in line, we have a regulation package that was proposed in 2024. This was then passed by the Fish and Wildlife Board following a hearing in February 2025, and then it was fully promulgated this May. The regulations that are most important to Nantucket include that we had a clarification that food plots and normal agricultural practices are not considered baiting. Previously, there were conflicts around whether or not things like standing crops would constitute baiting, and so we wanted to make that very clear. And in fact, we want to encourage hunters to help out farmers by shooting over those areas, because it's precisely those areas where it's really very critical from an ag production standpoint to address those deer densities. We also authorized the use of deer decoys during archery-only seasons. Previously, they were outlawed across all of the seasons, and deer decoys are a very healthy way of attracting deer in without putting additional chemicals like deer urine that could have disease risks, or putting other food products like corn on the landscape that could have impacts with non-targeting. that could have impacts with non-targeted species. We also removed the daily antelus possession limit, which is predominantly actually an impact on the islands, where you could take many, many deer. And previous to this, there was a cap on four deer that could be possessed before checking them in. And where this impacts mostly is really during the week of, the first week of shotgun season during biological deer check, when you would have to actually come in after every four deer to check them in before you could legally go take more deer. We want hunters to stay at field taking more deer. It's precisely that reason that hunters have those extra antelus permits in the first place. We also authorized the use of the youth deer permit for any open deer season. Previously, it was just for the open, for the youth deer day, and so now for those youth that are out hunting, they can use that either-sex permit during any open deer season. And then lastly, we created a winter primitive season for the month of January for Wildlife Management Zones 13 and 14, including Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket. For this regulation package, we followed our regular outreach process, where we advertise it through all of our channels, as well as doing direct contacts, and then also doing media interviews, including with the local papers there on Nantucket. And we held the hearing in January via two different virtual sessions. This ended up actually a record attendance for any previous regulation package, which really showed the enthusiasm and interest by many folks throughout the state in this package. We ended up with more than 300 total comments between both individual and organizations, and members of the public were able to either do oral comments during either of those hearings or submit written comments during a follow-up written comment period. This is just a graph that shows essentially the frequency in folks' written comments, and you can see both Nantucket Island, Martha's Vineyard being something that many people talked about, as well as the overall support. This is just showing, you know, the frequency of each one of these words in written comment. And we really had overwhelming support for the entire regulation package. The highest participation on the individual comments end was for the January 13 and 14 season there at the bottom, with more than 200 comments in support and 25 comments in opposition. And organizationally, we had the 11 organizations that were in support of that regulation, and only one in opposition, being the MSPCA, that is opposed to hunting as a primary mode of regulating, or of reducing deer densities. In terms of the islands specifically, the, we're able to, we had written support from both the NV Tick Program, as well as the Nantucket Hunting Association, and there were no island organizations that spoke out or submitted letters in opposition to the regulations. And for individuals, we had 105 total island residents that spoke out or submitted comments during that period. 85 were in favor, six that were neither in opposition or in favor, and 14 that were in opposition. Now, in terms of this January season, throughout this entire process, there were many folks that were concerned because of sort of the legendary pieces with the February 2005 hunt that had a number of kind of issues arise during that hunt due to folks not really aware of what they could and couldn't use during the hunt, as well as just kind of in general, the island has changed quite a bit, and also hunting has changed, as now almost every hunter will be utilizing GPS devices, particularly using software like OnX, which helps hunters afield, being able to know where they are. During that original season, it was a very high-pressure hunt. It was only on Nantucket, so all of that pressure was focused on just the island. It was only a six-day hunt, which really creates that immense pressure on such a short window. It was a shotgun season, which the shotgun season by far and away has the most pressure, and so you also have those additive sources of conflict that come along with that. And also, that was at a time when we just had far higher hunter participation in the state, at that time with more than 80,000 licensed hunters across the state. The other thing that has really changed between that and this new season is that that season both took place in February, but it took place at a time when there really were no late-season hunts, and that has changed significantly. This new hunt is across both Wildlife Management Zones 13 and 14 for January 2026, so you have that reduced pressure by having it across both Wildlife Management Zones. But also, this hunt is likely to expand to Zones 9, 10, and 11 across eastern Massachusetts for 2027, based on a pending regulation I'll talk about shortly. The other key piece here too is that it's the full months. You're having 26 or 27 days, depending on when the Sundays align in the calendar. So you have a much more extended period where hunters will be on the landscape. But one of the biggest key pieces here is that it's a primitive season, so they can use either archery equipment or muzzle loaders, and in general, that's a much lower-pressure style of hunting, because you're not going to be doing large deer drives, for example. And at this point, the hunter participation in the state has declined significantly, but this year, we're expecting to drop below 60,000 licensed hunters for the first time. And now, it is very common to be able to have these January seasons, and so there's not going to be that immense pressure from folks coming from throughout the country, as there are now seasons in Rhode Island, Connecticut, New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, all with January seasons. And so it's not going to have this huge pressure from non-resident hunters coming in who are unaware of the regulations here in Massachusetts. For that January season, the hunters will be required to purchase the New Year Primitive Stamp. Effectively, this season is an early season, so they would be purchasing the 2026 license year products, which also come with two new antlered tags that come with the license each year. They'd be able to use either bow or crossbow equipment, or the primitive firearms as muzzle loaders. The tags that could be used for this January season would include those two buck tags that come with the New Year license, any antelus permits that they purchase, the youth deer permit, which we will now have on sale beginning that December for this season, since you can now use that during any open deer season, as well as a winter deer permit, which is an either-sex permit we created for this hunt, that is predominantly meant to address issues of the sex ratio. One of the unique aspects of the hunts for Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard is that there's been unlimited antelus permits available since 1988. And so with that, there's been a situation where unlike a normal deer management regime, where you really focus on just female management, there's effectively a finite number of hunters that can come to the islands, just based on the logistics hurdles that come with that. And since each hunter only gets those two buck tags, there's effectively a lot of extra bucks that are running around the island that go beyond just the ones that would be even harvestable by the number of hunters. And so this winter deer permit would allow the take of a third buck, and potentially for youth that be participating, they could even potentially take that fourth buck with the either-sex tag with the youth deer permit. These are the dates for next year's season, for anyone that is looking for those, and all of the license year products will go on sale December 1st for the new season. The key part of this is that the winter deer permit is only for that January season, so we'd be encouraging hunters to use that permit for primarily a buck, however, if they so choose to use that on antelus deer, they can. And that permit will be a free permit. Any of the unused antelus permits that are purchased, or the remaining antlered tags on the license, can then be used during the following fall season. So we're really hoping this also encourages any off-island hunters that come for the January season, that purchase some of those island ADPs for the January season and don't have them filled, to have that as encouragement for them to come back the coming following season. So hopefully, we can, you know, get more people hunting a field on the island and increase that harvest. I just wanted to also introduce a regulation package that was proposed and passed to go to hearing at the 2025 Deer Review at our Fisheries and Wildlife Board. So this has been approved to go to hearing, and that hearing is likely to take place in January or February 2026. And the regulations that are most impactful for Nantucket are highlighted in yellow. Those include allowing the substitution of confirmation numbers for metal seals. I actually had piloted this program with Officer Dave Wright on Nantucket last year to be able to address things around deer damage and be able to ensure that as many of those deer as possible could be donated to our Hunter Share the Harvest program, and to be able to address food insecurity on the island. This effectively allows officers to be able to provide those confirmation numbers, rather than having to have metal seals and go out to each individual case where there needs to be a salvage case. And then there are a couple that were really focused on some of the issues that we've dealt with as we've been working through some of the areas of friction with island organizations. So the first is to remove the on-island deer check requirement. So every deer during the biological deer check week has to be brought in person across the state. However, it creates an issue particularly for the last day when folks are hunting on the island, either Martha's Vineyard or Nantucket, where they have to try to rush to get it to the individual check station before they leave the island. And what this would do is allow them to actually take the deer off-island and check it in on the mainland if they can't do it that day. So this will hopefully help keep some of those hunters afield on that last day of their hunt during the shotgun week, so that way more deer can be taken. The next one is to remove the visibility requirement for harvested deer. This may come as a surprise for many folks on Nantucket, because there's a municipal bylaw that states that hunters aren't supposed to be showing their deer, when in fact, that bylaw is not actually currently a legal bylaw. The state has had a regulation enforced for decades prior to that bylaw that requires that every deer actually be visible. That's required from a law enforcement standpoint, so that way law enforcement would be able to see that there is a deer, and then be able to check that that deer was being legally taken. However, this isn't a major conflict issue, and it creates a situation where both for within Nantucket, but also on the Steamship Authority, we're effectively putting our hunters in a situation where they're being told to effectively break the law one way or another. And so we've made the decision to propose this regulation to remove that requirement, and so that way hunters would be legally allowed to have their deer concealed as required in those situations, as well as for urban hunting and such. It makes it much more, so to speak, palatable for the modern attitudes around hunting. We also would be extending the youth deer day to include Friday. Currently, it's just a Saturday, and we've found that when you have poor weather, that really takes away that opportunity for parents to take their child field, and so this would create that extra opportunity for them to take their child out hunting when you have the lower pressure with just youth hunting. We also would change the start of the archery season to the Monday following Youth Day. When you have a late Thanksgiving and an early Labor Day, because of the way the seasons are currently set up, you create this one-week gap, as we have this current season where Youth Day is the 26th of, or sorry, the 27th of October, and, or sorry, 27th of September, and the beginning of archery isn't until October 6th, versus four out of every seven years, it starts immediately the following Monday. This would effectively make it where it's always that next Monday. So it only impacts the season three out of seven years. And then lastly, we would expand the winter primitive and archery season to include Zones 9, 10, and 11. So effectively, at that point, that January season would be in all of eastern Massachusetts, with the exception of Cape Cod, where deer densities are lower. And with that, I can take any questions.
Questions? Malcolm?
Well, thank you very much. When I was involved in this several years ago, we certainly did not have the imagination, the cooperation from the state that we certainly appear to have today. I have one question about your density. Again, looking back in the past, I thought the ideal density was five to 10, and you're talking about 12 to 18. Have I lost something in 10 years, or something's changed? Or am I just forgetful?
Yes, so the goal densities for the state were unified by passing of the board, I think in like 2012, around there. Frankly, the goal of five to 10 was a legacy from when deer densities in the east were dramatically lower. If you go back to essentially the 1970s, 1980s, deer densities across the east were relatively around those goals, and that was set mostly because of suburban goals. But at this point, the densities are actually far higher than that across all the east. So our, the western portions of the state actually have lower densities, even though back then, the goal was higher at 12 to 18, and the east was five to 10. So essentially, the state has just flipped. We now have a unified goal of 12 to 18, because that's the densities where you essentially can still have force regeneration. Multiple study, or many studies frankly, from throughout the northeast have found that above 18 deer per square mile, force regeneration essentially completely stops. You already have impacts below that, though. Like in the, around 15 deer per square mile in most areas, you're going to have impacts. And if you're in an area with closed contiguous forests, even at around 12 to 13 deer per square mile, you're going to have impacts.
If, just to follow up, it seems, but if I recall, just for, for instance, tick-borne disease control, you needed a much lower density, around five, am I?
No, that is absolutely correct. So there have been studies done on small islands where they were able to actually test this with deer removal, and you really don't get any collapse in the tick densities until around 10 to 11 deer per square mile, and you don't actually have a full population collapse for the ticks until you're below, right around 7 to 8 deer per square mile. So you really have to get in that five to seven range to see collapses in the tick population. It's very difficult. I mean, that's a, it's part of the reason why we don't necessarily talk about the tick piece quite as much, because it's, in most scenarios, it's going to be nearly impossible to get deer densities that low. There are ways of augmenting that, so if you can do other tick treatment strategies that help reduce regular tick abundance, and then you do that along with deer management, those two things can have an additive effect at reducing deer, reducing tick abundance. But relying on deer removal alone for tick abundance reduction is not going to be that successful in most cases.
Yeah, so we can't expect a big change in tick-borne disease, so maybe next year you'll come back and tell us how we're going to get down to five.
That's, that'd be a lot of deer removal.
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, it's a major issue on this island.
Yeah, absolutely.
Higher risk of tick-borne disease in most places in the United States.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's a major issue. I am one of the collaborating researchers as part of the New England Regional Center of Vector-Borne Diseases, based at UMass, and so we're working on many different pathways of trying to address tick abundance. But it's a, it's a challenging thing, and trying to do that with deer abundance alone is going to be just very difficult functionally.
Right, well, I'm not going to take more time, but we should talk about it later. It's a great subject.
So, is the request for us to, okay, okay, so we don't need to schedule a hearing? That's on your end?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a state hearing.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions? Does anyone in the public have a question on this? I will note that I have noticed a lot of deer, and they're not scared of me lately. And they're very beautiful, too. Oh, Amy, go ahead.
Hi, Amy Eldridge. I, I understand the need for the hunt. I live in Wisconsin, I see them all over the place. My concern is, and I just want to, it's not really a concern, it's just a comment, there's a lot of building going on on this island, and it keeps driving these animals out of their natural habitat into more visible spaces. So I want people to just have an understanding that we humans are affecting their habitat, and so we need to be a little respectful of that. I do understand that they're having multiple births, and we do need to thin the herd, but we're also building 40Bs, huge things for housing. Where do you want these animals to go? And it's not only the deer that are spreading these diseases, it's birds, it's the rabbits, it's the mice, it's the rats. There's a whole host of animals that live in the wilderness that are spreading this here, you know? So I want, I don't want the deer to be the, the, you know, the end-all, be-all to this problem, because they're not completely the problem. So I just want to keep that in mind, that we humans need housing. Well, if we keep deforesting the forest to build housing, then these animals have no place to go but your yard, the streets, and weird places that we see them, like in downtown Main Street. You know, us humans have caused this problem, and we need to be aware of that, and it's not the animals' fault. So I appreciate you guys taking that into consideration, that the amount of building... So I appreciate you guys taking that into consideration, that the amount of building, the amount of, of, of stuff going on in this community is having an adverse reaction. It's coming back to bite us. So I just hope that you guys consider that. Thank you.
I'm not, I can't really comment on the, the building piece, but the one thing I just think it's important to note here. Even in absence of all of that, if there are islands where uh deer have uh been brought in for various reasons, even to like islands that are uninhabited, that were brought in for hunting uh reasons. And deer populations in absence of predators will grow exponentially. And the deer that are there on the island essentially all date to deer that were brought in in the thirties and forties. Um, and so at this point, even in absence of all of those other changes, which obviously are outside of my purview as a deer biologist, uh, you would still have exponential growth in the, in the deer abundance, which would still have all the ecological impacts that are critical for the conservation of, of all the rare ecosystems that are available on Nantucket.
Thank you very much. It's an important point. I think um we appreciate the update and so I think we're good on this agenda item for now.
Sounds good. Have a good night.
Thank you. Sorry, my eyesight's getting worse. A LEC COM request for waiver of the town noise bylaw for national grid work from Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to Friday, October tenth, twenty twenty-five from ten P M to seven A M. Work areas include Easy Street, Coleman Court, Steamship Wharf, Candle Street Substation.
Um, so this is all related to the National Grid L One project, which has been ongoing since last uh the spring. Most of the work will be done during the daytime, eight to four, but there are gonna be a couple of locations where if they do daytime work, it's gonna impact the truck traffic. So they are proposing a couple of nights to be able to get those areas done.
Questions, concerns, motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have um number three, Natural Resources Department Review and Request for Acceptance of the Eelgrass Management Plan. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Um, I'm Tara Riley. I'm the Shellfish and Aquatic Resource Manager for the Town of Nantucket. And I'm here to just provide a brief review of Nantucket Island's first eelgrass management plan and request a formal acceptance. So this plan was funded by the Great Harbor Yacht Club Foundation back last fall. And it was a collaboration between um the Natural Resources, uh the Land and Water Council and UMass Boston. Um, in addition, we also had a lot of uh input um and collaborations with industry experts and restoration specialists. So why does the town of Nantucket need an eelgrass management plan? There are a lot of towns that have zero eelgrass. And so since we have um such beautiful eelgrass, it's, you know, time to protect it before we lose it. So there's a lot of um different benefits uh to having a healthy eelgrass population. Stabilizes sediment and removes carbon dioxide. It provides habitat and nursery um for a lot of species. It also is very integral in um supporting our base scallop uh life cycle and industry. Um, and in addition, we've been doing a lot of these Benthic surveys since two thousand and six. Um, the graph on the bottom represents Nantucket Harbor. We look at around forty sites in Nantucket Harbor. And since two thousand and six, we had around thirty-seven percent coverage and we're down to fourteen percent in um twenty twenty-four. Uh, we just finished um this year's surveys, which also include Mattikit and Tucker Knuck Island. Um, well, we should have that data after the first of the year. Um, but we finished uh fifty-two dives in seven days as of Monday, so um we're pretty excited to uh have that information. The good news on this graph for Nantucket Harbor, if you're looking for it, is, you know, since twenty twenty, it appears that the rate of loss for eelgrass is slowing. So we're hoping that we are achieving some stabilization through um our town initiatives. Next slide. Uh, so for the mission for the eelgrass management plan is to protect, stabilize, and restore our eelgrass. We had four main focus areas, uh protection, restoration, research and monitoring, and outreach and education. Uh, everyone within the work group and everyone that we talked to emphasized protection. Um, their restoration of eelgrass um is largely unsuccessful and it's very expensive. And so everyone agreed that it's best to protect what we have because those beds that we protect have the ability to um reseed themselves and expand as long as um they're healthy and protected. Next slide. So part of what went into the development of the plan is really trying to understand our historical and current levels. That's something that we're still um digging through information on. Um, I don't think any of us are under the impression that Nantucket Harbor, Mattikit Harbor had a hundred percent coverage of eelgrass ever. Um, we have been looking at historical photos and we do see a lot of shoaling in areas also that we see shoaling today. So we're just trying to kind of figure out what um, what the current levels were so that we can uh move forward with a realistic plan as far as um what we would be able to achieve in the future. Uh, we've been digging through a lot of research and data, um seeing what was available locally and regionally. Um, like I said, we consulted with a lot of eelgrass specialists um regionally that have um been successful in restoration projects and um are currently leading uh some of the protection initiatives in their communities. Um, and then kind of ultimately trying to answer the question is what will eelgrass loss mean for Nantucket's historical culture, ecosystems, and economy? Next slide. Uh, so this is um an example. There were over fifty uh recommendations that came out of the plan. And I just pulled this protection priority recommendation as an example. So the goal would be to ensure that the laws and regulations support eelgrass health. Um, the recommendation would be to update the regulations and management policies to protect and restore eelgrass. And then one of the many action items that might have been listed in this section could include reduce impacts of anchors and moorings, which would be, you know, seek to prohibit anchoring in eelgrass beds. Um, and also seek to transition to conservation moorings. Next slide. Uh, so the path forward for us, um, this was a very accelerated timeline. We started in January of twenty twenty-five and we um finalized the plan in July uh first of twenty twenty-five. And so right now, we're in a situation where um after the acceptance, um, we are having regular group meetings um with our focus work group that helped develop the plan. Um, and we have a list of action items that need to be prioritized. So that's kind of our next goal. And for fiscal year twenty-six, we plan to work within the existing framework of our current staff and our, our budget. Um, I imagine that out of the prioritization exercise, we'll have you know, a list of things that we wanna tackle in the next year. And so we will be developing a one-to-three-year short term and a one-to-ten-year long-term um strategic plan that um will forecast funding, collaborations, and possible staff expansion. And there is uh an executive summary on our website, um as well as the, the full plan. If anybody's interested, I'm happy to answer questions uh regarding the plan and moving forward.
Question?
Yes, could you go back to maybe your first slide where you had percentage? I have a question about that. Oh, that, that was it. That one.
Is this? This, this is COVID time?
No, um, so from two thousand, two thousand and six to two thousand and fourteen, the Benthic surveys um were conducted by Mariah Mitchell and Dr. Peter Voice and Val Hall, or uh, yeah, Val Hall. Um, and so there was a, when they stopped doing the surveys, there was a la- a, a lack of funding to do it and trying to decide who was appropriate to take it on. And at the time, we didn't have the staff to support that type of work or the funding. Um, so, so there was a lapse in, in the data collection for that.
Why is, I mean, it looks like it peaked again in two thousand and nineteen and then is it, it went back up to? No, but, yeah, but here. See this? It's very similar to years back. So there wasn't any fall until two thousand and twenty, real fall.
Yeah, it can be very variable. And also, you know, the town took over the surveys in two thousand and nineteen. We're conducting them in the same way that they did, but there was, there are rates of recovery in between years. Um, and what we're looking at is the overall trend over, you know, ten to fifteen years.
It's just such a, I'm sorry.
It's just such a, a giant fall between nineteen and twenty comparative to the, it's like it all happened that year. All right. You have no, who knows? All right. I thought maybe we're looking at post-COVID and we're gonna see what happens when there's not human activity. And as soon as human activity starts again, the eelgrass goes down. I don't know. That's stretching it. And the other question I have in, in your report, you talk about the the nitrogen concentration is now below what we wanted it to be. I forget that terminology.
The total maximum daily?
Yeah. And I've said for years, I've always questioned, how is that determined? That that's some magic number? Is it just drawn out of a hat? And no one's been able to ever answer a good answer me correctly or rationally of how that was chosen. That particular number of ideal level.
Yeah, the state sets that threshold for each water body and it's different, you know, between water bodies. Mattikit has a completely different one than Nantucket Harbor.
So we have, we have to be careful when we think we're below something because it's really in some ways an arbitrary number. The fact that it's low is good, but it, it may not be a magic number. It's like deer density. We set these numbers that are just arbitrary. So the point is, we wanna be low as we can, but we shouldn't get too excited that we're below that arbitrary number.
Well, the point is to be below for an extended period of time to support the ecosystem services that we're trying to protect.
Yep, thank you. By the way, this is an excellent, this was an excellent. I, who wrote all of this? Did you do that?
No, it was uh Urban Harbors Institute.
It was, it was, it's really a, a very fine piece of work.
Thank you.
The other, the other point, Malcolm, is that there's, it's nitrogen is one thing to measure. But if you look in the appendix, there's a bunch of stressors. And it, you know, I'm channeling Steve Bender now when he talks about surfacents and pollutants. And it's a large part of what is happening and what has happened. And so I think some of those are measured and some of those are not measured. And the island has, you know, a lot more, you know, since nineteen even, has a lot more stress on it uh on the systems and on the island. You know, you can't, it can't not be uh what we're doing. And so I think those all enter into this, so.
Anybody else? Thank you, Tara. That's really great. Um, next up, public hearings. Um, also natural resources.
Can I make a motion to accept the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you may.
All right.
I've just made a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd just, again, compliment the report. It's, it was one of the best things I've seen
Well done.
Recently from staff on the island.
Yep. I, I concur. It's really comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next up, we do have the public hearing to consider amendments to Town of Nantucket Regulations, Chapter two sixty, Fishing and Shellfishing. Open the public hearing.
Okay, you guys get me three times tonight. So over, let's see, uh, over the past year since twenty twenty-four, we've been working with the Harbor Shellfish Advisory Board in conducting a thorough review and update and clarification, clarification of our um shellfish regulations. And so the sh- uh SHAB approval um of the update happened in April fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. We sent them to Town Council in May of twenty twenty-five. And then the finalization of the edits from Town Council and Town Administration came in June of twenty twenty-five. And so here we are, uh, gonna do a quick presentation of uh some of the changes um that we did for the updates. So most of what we needed to change within the regulations was terminology. We wanted to match the state, state language and change things like board of selectmen to select board. Um, also, base scallop ring was changed to base scallop growth line. Again, just to match the state language. In general revisions, we did a lot of clarifications. We had some problems um throughout the season, year after year, with some misunderstandings between regulations and communications. And we just wanted to try to really do a thorough overview of that. Um, we have a few examples that I listed, um, the catch report required before license renewal. And then also scallop dredge alterations must be approved, inspected, and not harm eelgrass. Next. Uh, some of the additions that we added, um, or I guess kind of changed the title of. We had a retired commercial scalper license, which was changed to the recreational scallop dredge license. Everything pretty much stayed the same with that. A lot of uh what we added was to make sure that if we had a regulation, that there were also violations associated with each regulation. And there weren't with this one, so violations were added. We also updated some harvest limits um that needed to be uh either har- or updated or omitted because it's largely the state that manages um some of these things that were listed. And uh the commercial limits, if you recall, last, I believe it was October or November of last year, um, you guys gained the ability to either raise or lower the bushel limits based on um information and data provided to you by our department. Um, and last year, we were able to raise it to six bushels, which was the first time in a long time. Um, and so this year, uh, we'll be looking through the data and probably visiting to provide a recommendation for the upcoming season as well. Next. Uh, for the apprentice program, we added some best management practices and we uh reduced the requirement for the apprentice program from forty days of fishing to twenty-five days of fishing. Again, we added violations and some wording clarifications. Dredges, right now, we have dredges listed and described in our regulations. However, there are some other dredges out there that are being used. And so until we're able to conduct a formal study uh on these dredges, we're just asking if any one is using an altered dredge other than what's described in the regulations to submit a letter um so that we can inspect it and weigh it um prior to uh approval for use. And then with our conch fishery or whelk, um, we changed the harvest schedule where you can uh fish for conch commercially in Nantucket Harbor on odd years, Mattikit Harbor on even years. And we changed the pot limit from ninety to a hundred and twenty. And tags may be transferred in writing and filed at N R D once per season. So again, these are like the major changes um that went on in the document. Next, please, Erica. We um associated some fines for the violations for conch, aqua- aquaculture, and scientific research. Um, we didn't have a lot of violations listed for aquaculture, so we wanted to match what the state had just to be consistent. And for scientific research on Nantucket Island, we also have a hard time keeping track of what everybody is doing in Nantucket Harbor. So we wanted to make sure that uh we have some scientific permits that can be filed. So we have an idea of, of what's happening and appropriate approvals of people conducting research. Next, please. And I think, I think that's it for the major changes. Does anybody have any questions?
Board questions? This is a public hearing, so please come to the mic. Just state your name.
My name is Penn Ames and I've been a commercial scalper going on 50 years now and I have some concerns over the dredge restrictions they're proposing. I think that the 35 pound weight limit is an unreasonable expectation. I think the average dredge that's used now will, will either meet that or go over that and I, I don't think it's going to work. You know, nobody wants to throw in a dredge that's too heavy and nobody wants to throw in a dredge that's too light. Now, I'm 70. Do you think I want to pump any more iron out there than I have to? Guys want to pump iron? Well, I certainly don't, but I don't think, you know, that, I think there, most of your dredges are going to be a touch over 35 and they're not, they're going to be declared illegal. There's, most of the dredges have changed now. They're no longer bar dredges. It's a, it's a chain dredge that has a foil on the front and the reason guys use them is they're cleaner and easier. They don't catch as much sand, they don't catch as much grass, they're just plain easier to use and that's why we use them. And I think you're better off letting the fishermen decide what works because nobody, you know, wants to throw in something that doesn't work. You don't want to throw in something that's too heavy. It's heavy and it's dirty and if you throw in something too light, you don't catch anything. Now, most of the guys out there aren't much younger than me, so they're all, you know, they don't want to throw anything too heavy in, they don't want to throw anything too light in, they just want to get them and get done. Now, if you, if you make something.
Can I ask Tara to address your concern or did you have another?
No, I have, look, if the dredge is too light, you know, say you make four passes with a dredge the correct weight. If the dredge is too light, you're going to have to make eight passes with a dredge, where the dredge is not right. So the bottom gets whacked anyway. You know, we've, we've never had to have our dredges inspected in 50 years and I, you know, I think it's kind of a slap in the face or it's kind of like unsportsmanlike conduct to impose these regulations on us. We couldn't catch them all last year and there's not many people to go anymore. Why are you doing this to us? You know? This is not a seat on the New York Stock Exchange. This is not one of the most profitable things on the island. We just want to do our thing and pretty much be left alone. We don't want this restriction imposed on us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to go back to Tara.
Respectfully, the 35 pound dredge limit was implemented in 2014, so it's been on the books for a long time. It may not, you know, be enforced. I know that traditionally, like in the early years, the warden has conducted a preseason inspection of boats to make sure people have safety equipment. I don't know if it's a routine, routinely weighed, but it has been something that's been on the books and when we put that regulation in in 2014, there was a working group of fishermen that agreed to the 35 pound limit with the traditional dredges that are used, aside from the new ones that are being introduced.
I, Sharon Ames, the other one on his boat. I just wanted to check something to make sure I'm not wrong, but in section 260-432, something was changed and it says, "All base scallops harvested in Nantucket waters shall be landed in shell and shall remain in town-approved containers." Does the container that says Martha's Vineyard considered town-approved still? Because back in the day, Dave Franzudo would take a big boat over to Martha's Vineyard because we didn't have enough boxes and probably eight out of 10 of our boxes, I'll say, owned by Martha's Vineyard. So I just, I know that this got changed. I just want to make sure that the scallop boxes that say Martha's Vineyard are considered approved.
I don't think we meant that literally and maybe that needs clarification, but it's, it's, you know, the regular box that we have, I don't think it matters what it says as long as it's the size and that's kind of what we meant by town, town-approved box for a bushel.
I just didn't want an employee to say to me, "We don't have the right box." I have one more question. 260-4.83, "All confiscated catch will be documented and photographed before unlawful shellfish back into the water by the shellfish constable." My question is, the one word is water. In here, water is defined as coastal water, tidal flats, tidal creeks, all salt and freshwater within the boundaries of Nantucket, and I believe it's a two-mile radius around this island that's considered our waters. So my question is hypothetically, if a town employee confiscated your shellfish, what water does he put it in to return it back to water? And how is it put back in the water? Because if a fisherman comes to shore and a employee of the town, let's say, says you have too many or something, they're going to put them back in the water. What water, and I asked Mr., Mr. Franzudo isn't here, Franzudo this, and he did agree with me that it isn't defined. What water did the shellfish go back into and how do they go back in?
I'm going to let Jeff take this one.
Thanks.
Good evening. I was trying to hold off until our next agenda item to have to get up, but um, so in this case, our typical practice for any shellfish that gets returned to the water, it's typically returned to the water from it came. So if it's from Nantucket Harbor, we endeavor to put it back into Nantucket Harbor. If it's from Matikit Harbor, back into Matikit Harbor. I also know anytime we, we transport or relay shellfish, we have requirements through the Division of Marine Fisheries that certain things can only go in certain places without permission, so we, we do try to put them back to the harbor from which they were harvested.
So if I come in at 3:30 in the afternoon, is it four that we have to be home by? What time do we have to be home by? Is it four? So if I come home by 3:30, are my scallops going to go back in the water immediately? Because if they sit around, they're going to be dead. So if you, does that mean that a boat from the Natural Resources Department is going to bring my scallops back out to a very specific spot? Many fishermen have this question. Where do they go back in and how do they go back in and timely, how do they get back in?
We do try to return them as quickly as possible. Obviously, if we're going through and if it's, you know, different situations merit different investigations. So if it's something where you're dealing with, with seed scallops, where you have to measure and do things, sometimes that can take longer, obviously. Again, we do have boats available to be in the water. I know we've also been aided by the harbor master who has boats in the water year round to get things back quickly. Where they go specifically, I know, can vary from time to time. We try to rely upon some of the data we collect for things like eel grass and proper habitat to return them to areas where they'll do well. But that's our typical practice that we do.
I have a question. Last year I was told that you were freezing them in shells.
We are going to need to start sending the questions through the board, through the chair.
To the board. I was told last year by a constable that if scallops have been confiscated for whatever reason, that they're put in a town freezer. And I went to the police department and asked, "Do you know where the town freezer is?" And he said, "They're not being put in the morgue and we don't know where there's some town freezer that's holding scallops. Where is this freezer?"
Jeff, would you like to address that?
Sure, I'm happy to and I'm also happy to, to show folks where it is. We do have a freezer at our office at 131 Pleasant Street and sometimes in conjunction with the Mass Environmental Police, not always scallops or shellfish, sometimes things at their request are held to deal with appeals. Sometimes they're held as evidence for, for further investigation, but we document it as such and that has happened from time to time with more shellfish than just scallops.
My question to the board is, if you're going to freeze them, they're going to kill them, correct? In shell. So we're killing them if we're going to put them in a shell, in a freezer, instead of returning them to the water, which is 260-4.83. So I don't understand why we're freezing them and killing them.
Okay.
So again, anytime we take one of these enforcements, we also coordinate and notify the Division Marine Fisheries and Mass Environmental Police. Sometimes they request that things be held and we need a facility to do that and the proper facility is to freeze them. I know that's not exactly how it's, how it's written there. Again, if it's something that's as simple as, you know, a small amount that's taken or something that happens, they certainly go back in. When we coordinate with our enforcement partners, if they request us to hold them, we certainly hold them.
Thank you.
To the board, I have a question. As a fisherman, are we allowed to watch our scallops be put back in the water?
I think we can happily have that discussion. I think before we agree to take folks out on a town-owned or operated vessel, I think that's something that we want to review with, with council for insurance purposes or things that are there to make sure that those folks can get on that as a resource. Like I said, we've, we've documented before and put stuff in and it's, we're certainly happy to be transparent about our process for what's happening.
I have a question for Jeff. One second, please. How often are you confiscating a few scallops? Is it, is that very often or?
It's fairly irregular. I mean, I think in the last season that we had, I want to say it happened maybe once. It's not, again, it's not common. The fishing fleet, I think, does a really exemplary job of following the rules and doing things. I mean, it's, it's happened from time to time, certainly, and it will happen again, but we try our best to not have significant confiscations.
I won't talk anymore, just one more quick.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to thank Mr. Dave Franzudo for doing all this because it had to have been extremely tedious with all of SHAB and everything. If that discussion ever does come, whether we can come watch our scallops be put in, maybe people would volunteer to go in their own boat. You don't have, we don't have to go on the town boat to watch them.
In the event that they were confiscated and needed to be returned to the water.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, just in general, I don't think that anyone wants to inhibit our commercial scalloping industry. I mean, it's, there are less and less people doing it and we want these regulations to make sense and be put into practice properly. With that, I'll turn to Andy Lowell, who's at the mic.
Madam Chair, thank you. Members of the board, Andy Lowell, Chairman of the Harbor Shellfish Advisory Board. I'm going to speak on behalf of the entire board as we voted unanimously to approve these regulation changes and I am going to estimate we went over these regulations for approximately 30 meetings. It's a little unfortunate that it's being picked apart before you, the board, here. With all due respect to the Ames, they have been to our meetings in the past and any of these questions could have been answered while we were working on them. It's actually currently has even been on our agenda at our most recent meeting up till our last meeting. This has been on our agenda for almost a year. We discuss them every meeting. We have gone over these regulations from page one to the very end with a fine-toothed comb. We have two active fishermen on the board and we also have the retired harbor master, Dave Franzudo, on the board. The younger fisherman on our board, Jim Sherwin, has been extremely instrumental in creating these revisions. Also, Bob DeCosta is on the board. He has been instrumental in working out these regulations that honestly needed some updating. It's been a long time. So, and as far as everything we have discussed, Tara Riley has been there at every meeting. She has taken it home with her, reviewed it all. Any questions she has, I'm sure she goes directly to Mr. Carlson and gets her questions answered, comes back to our next meeting and everything has been clarified. This town is extremely fortunate to have Tara Riley as our town biologist. She has her thumb on the pulse of our harbors and she also loves her job, which means we are getting full benefit and sincerity with what she does. Mr. Carlson, I feel, is the same. If there is some adjustments to continue to be made, if we're talking about a pound on the weight of a dredge, as Ms. Riley said, 35 pounds has been there since 2014. Actually, the constable weighed some dredges last year and I think, you know, that may be an adjustment that could simply be made, but anything else, you know, if you don't want to have your catch confiscated, then you know what to do not to have your catch confiscated. Don't violate any of the, of the regulations. We went over all of this. We all know if you're mounting your boxes too much, the constable can take out a stick and level them. If you have too many seed, if he sees too many seed in the box, he's going to dump a box out and he's going to count them. I don't think there are too many things that warrant your catch being confiscated. As Mr. Carlson said, maybe two were confiscated last year, but anyhow, we're not here to debate this now. It's been debated for over 30 meetings at SHAB and you're well aware of this. You're, you're aware of our agenda. You're aware of our meetings, first and third Tuesday of every month. And, and so I don't think it's fair to this board to be hashing over this now as we've hashed it over for at least 30 meetings.
Respectfully, this is a public hearing and anyone in the public is allowed to speak to this. However, can we get to the like root of the dredge thing? Like what are we talking about? Is it, if it's not 35, like are some of them like 36 or 37 pounds? Like what, what are, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not enacting something that like should have a tiny bit of leeway without.
Sure.
Different technologies.
I, I think that gets to part of the question, right? Is there's definitely a newer technology that's being used by, by some of the fleet? I think panel referenced those dredges. We don't have a lot of information about that dredge. When the 35 pounds came to be in 2014, everyone was still using the pretty standard bar dredge that still is used by a good portion of the fleet. That was a weight that through that work group was decided to be, I'm 100% confident if the warden were to weigh that dredge and it's at 35 and a half, right? It's going to be, we're within a range, right? It's, it's to avoid the ones that are 40 pounds and 45 pounds and, and there've been some heavier dredges than others, but I know we're happy to try to work with people if it looks like it's an issue we're close to take a look or see if it's there. I know it's always come up, you know, as they're in the water and some of the rope gets, gets wet or they get things that are in them, they can change too. Again, it's, it's a standard that's set because there needs to be a standard so you can have some level of control to it, but I also think that there's a level of professionalism between both the enforcement personnel and the fishermen to have some reasonable common sense with it too.
Which I would imagine is generally how that all works. I mean, do we say something like approximately 35? Would we change it like that or is it because we've already advertised them written this way and it was already in there? in there?
I think 35 is fine, if I may, just for the fact that, again, since 2014, it hasn't been an issue, right? And with these new dredges that we're still trying to figure out how they function and work, we're just trying to collect some information to see, and that may be something that we're back in front to talk about, how those new dredges behave, or if they need to be regulated differently, or if they are providing a benefit by not causing the impact, that those can be, you know, separated out. But I think we're just trying to solve some of those unknowns.
Okay, so we may.
Again, that's why
It may come back if there's a problem happening in practice.
Absolutely. And again, with it, we haven't had a problem since 2014 with the weight, so I wouldn't anticipate that starting now.
Totally agree, but, you know, sometimes people change, and regulations are, you know, right to the exact letter of being enforced, and it doesn't have common sense, and it's, you know, becomes a real problem
For sure.
In practice. One more comment?
Yeah, just like I say, you hit the nail on the head. It's like three, you know, illegal is illegal, and it's probably like three pounds too light. It's just, it was a number that somebody grabbed and without really checking, you know?
If I may, having participated in those updates in 2014, you know, the group of fishermen that were around the table, and I can tell you specifically that 35 pounds was recommended by a group that included, you know, Carl Sherlin, Doug Smith was there, Ron Shepard was a part of that group. There were well-established fishermen that came together for that number in 2014.
Where's the board at on this? We have an open public hearing.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that, Mark.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously.
I want to go with the many, many months of public input and meetings and the recommendation before, so I move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, with the understanding that we're hearing that if we find there is a discrepancy between the new ones and the other, that we will deal with it, that it won't be onerous, it won't be.
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, and I would add, like, what I said earlier, that this is an industry that we want to maintain as a legacy of Nantucket, that is, there's not as many people committed to being commercial scallopers anymore, and it's kind of sad for the community. So we just want to make sure that everything works well in practice.
If I may, real quickly to that, we, as the Natural Resources Department, put a lot of time, energy, and effort towards fostering commercial fishing. I mean, we operate really the only municipal hatchery in the Commonwealth. A big part of the apprentices change, where to help incentivize apprentices to come into the fishery, right? Where we want people to fish, we want people to participate, right? There are our best eyes and ears out there. So for us, you know, we really want to see the fishery return to, you know, as much of its former glory as possible. That's what we're hopefully trying to do.
We know that you do, and the whole team's doing an amazing job, and has expanded into just an incredible department. But with that, we'll take the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously.
I did.
And you're up again.
Yeah, it's a night of natural resources tonight. I will say, we had a couple of these things, and our departmental update was scheduled for a while ago, so we asked Libby really, really nicely if we could kind of stack all of our stuff together.
So town managers report the monthly departmental report for natural resources. I don't know if Libby wants to say anything.
Just that this is another report in a series of reports that you all have been getting monthly, and we're moving our focus into more specifics of what the department's working on, what their challenges might be, what they might be planning for, those types of things. And we're asking that they really try to incorporate the staff, people that are working on some of the initiatives. Go ahead, Jeff.
All right. Thank you, guys, again. Jeff Carlson for the Natural Resources Department with me tonight. I have Tara Riley, who you guys have seen a lot this evening. Vince, who you've also seen this evening, our Sustainability Programs Manager. And then the missing member of our team tonight that you haven't seen yet, Will Delerba, is with us as well, and he'll be talking about a portion. Right, Erica? Could jump ahead. So just to run through what we're going to talk about tonight, again, we're going to talk about each one of our divisions' kind of highlights and initiatives that they're going through. We're really focusing departmentally on, you know, public-private partnerships and public engagement, and then we definitely have some challenges that we are trying to deal with. But we have a great, fun crew that works hard and tries to do a lot. All right. To tie into what you guys have tasked us with, we obviously are the primary stewards for the environmental leadership goal, and it's something that we talk about a lot, you know? How do we create a leadership for the community, not only on Nantucket but in the Commonwealth? How do we lure people to come help us and be collaborators, not just on island but off island? And these are kind of the four pieces to the puzzle that we look at, to be proactive, to collaborate, you know, to provide, you know, equity and access to folks, and then to be accountable and transparent to people, to let them be involved in the programming that we're trying to put forward. So to kind of segue into our programming, I think we're going to kick it off first with our Shell Vision Aquatic Resources Program and some of the initiatives that we have going on currently.
Thanks, Jeff. So while there are many highlights, I just wanted to take a moment to place some emphasis on kind of what's working best for us right now. Since 2019, we've been writing grants and submitting proposals that have been consistently funded through the Great Harbor Yacht Club Foundation, and to date, we've received over half a million dollars in funding. This money has been used to upgrade hatchery equipment. We are the only municipal hatchery in the Commonwealth that is producing shellfish. We also have two bioreactors that's used to grow shellfish feed, and we have a flow cam which is used for the rapid identification of harmful algae blooms. We've expanded our educational outreach and programming with this money, and most recently fast-tracked the creation of the eelgrass management plan that we needed sooner than later. This type of support that we've received has improved our efficiencies, and it's accelerated our timelines as a town related to fishery management implementation, shellfish production, harmful algae detection, and, again, creation of plans. In addition to this monetary support, the collaborations that come along with that have really expanded our access to regional and industry experts who are all watching and help guiding and supporting our efforts to ensure that we have the best chance of success. Next slide, please. So a couple of our specific initiatives that I want to highlight, I talked about earlier, was the fall in Bentec surveys. It's really important to look at the changes of shellfish and eelgrass over time and other parameters as well. The long-term data trends now inform our current management recommendations. We came to you last fall with that specific data to raise the bushel limit. That's just an example of what we can do. Beyond that, you know, our staff just completed the 52 dives, which was a record in seven days on Monday. We're really excited to get this data for this year, to add it to the long-term data, and work towards prioritizing the items in the newly accepted eelgrass management plan. Now we'll be able to look at an area in Nantucket Harbor or Maticate Harbor and categorize it based on the eelgrass population as a whole and decide quantitatively if it should be a candidate for protection. So we have the data to back up what we're visually observing over time. And lastly, just to round out, the most recent update of the harbor plan and the new eelgrass management plan, we're hoping to formally update the shellfish management plan, which was created in 2012. We have 75% of those action items already completed, and it's really ready for some enhanced measures. Next slide.
Hi, all. I'm Will Delerba, Conservation Agent for the glorious Natural Resources Department. I'm going to talk really quickly about our Regulatory Division highlights. As you probably all recall and remember, and after approximately 3 million meetings, we did pass and implement our new wetland regulations this January. Despite a whole lot of changes and definitely a lot of questions and some maybe initial confusion, things have been running really smoothly. I think everybody's really kind of adapted to the changes, including engineers, surveyors, project reps. With that update, I have been doing quite a bit of outreach, and this kind of completely runs the gamut from one-on-one meetings with homeowners on their property to kind of more like informal Q and A's and presentations, to Realtor, like, realty offices. There's always a lot of questions, and I think that, you know, our regs were complicated somewhat, but things have been running smoothly. We successfully moved through several enforcement actions, and then we've also been a part of helping to raise the local limit and extend commercial-based scalloping season. We also are now meeting twice a year, specifically to discuss procedures and potential updates to the regulations. So we're able to be a little more nimble. One of the thoughts in building that in the beginning was, in the case of making so many big changes, we wanted to be able to make changes again if necessary. And then, next slide, Erica. One of the biggest changes that we implemented after our first procedural update meeting was we changed our agenda format. And this is a mildly complicated graph, but if you look at the orange, that's to show our number of applications on a given meeting. These are all of our regularly scheduled meetings in fiscal year '25. The left side, there's a tiny heart in the middle that you'll see, but the blue is the meeting runtimes, and the left side are meeting runtimes before the procedural update was implemented. Our average runtime was three hours and nine minutes. Since the update, and I didn't take out outliers, you can see a few peaks there that are resulting from lengthy enforcement discussions at the end of a meeting, but our average runtime has gone from three hours and nine minutes to one hour and 53 minutes. And I think it's really allowed the commission to focus in on their discussions and talk about projects and applications that really need to be talked about at more length, and where a simple situation like a shed that's being put 80 feet from a wetland and doesn't require a waiver, we don't even have to hear a presentation anymore. So it's a little bit like a consent agenda but with non-waiver projects. And it's been excellent. And I think that's really, that's all I got to say about the Regulatory Division. Thank you.
Hi, again, Vince Murphy from the Natural Resources Department, covering the Climate and Resiliency Division. I'm going to talk a bit about stuff that we've been up to, what we've been working on, before I'm going to start talking about their stuff that we're going to do next or have planned. So across the Climate and Resiliency Division, we have the resilience, we've got the sustainability, we've got our protected species. But one of the things that we've figured out that we're pretty okay at is getting grant money. Over the last year, up to the end of the last financial year, we did pretty okay with some grants. We got $470,000 from CZM for the Easy Street project, we got a million for a dredging project, and then we got the seven offshore wind grants totaling up to about just a shade over $220,000. So we did okay. And we also have to thank everyone that also contributed cross-departmentally to help get us information for all of these different grant applications in order to have these successes. Within the sustainability realm, you can see this nice green lattice structure on the picture on the right-hand side. This is a new technology that we're testing. It's cliff stabilizers. It's one of these things that has been extraordinarily successful to date. We've only been working on this project since the end of March. We put it in to avoid a time-year restriction with a Conservation Commission permit. And in the last five-ish months, we've suffered from a little bit of over-success. These things have been massively successful, and in the test area on the South Shore have captured a huge volume of sand, and every time we raise them, they capture a bit more sand every time. They've now collected a couple of feet and have been buried in storms to the fact that we end up saving an awful lot of extra sand in our South Shore test area. It's been widely over-successful. We're very pleased with it. Hopefully, it's the kind of thing that we can, might be able to demonstrate to homeowners and be able to expand out across other vulnerable areas of the South Shore. By the way, this is the very end of Maticate Road in what is already a high-risk resilience area, erosion area. We've also been working on, in the last year, we've had very good success with our Pipe and Plover program. We've expanded the areas that we work within. We have a new partnership with the Nantucket Land Bank, and we now look after some of their properties in a cooperative fashion with some of their staff. And that has increased, because we've increased area, we now have, we're fledging about half of the chicks on island, or almost approaching half the chicks, between town of Nantucket properties and Land Bank properties. And last year, we fledged about 30 Pipe and Plover chicks, and we have a good few lease term colonies. And this year, we've had a lot of successes, and the early numbers show that we beat it. So that's good. One of the things that I want to share that we did this past year, financial year, was we, can I have the next slide, please, Erica? We worked with colleagues at Arcadis, who helped develop the Coast Resilience Plan. And what we did was, we looked at a lot of the successes we had in the CRP. We took the lessons learned over four years. We took a huge amount of accumulated observed information and managed to compile this into a journal article from a journal called, what's it called again? Shame on your head blanks. Oh, well, I'll come back to it. Frontiers in Climate. It's a journal with a pretty interestingly good climate factor, sorry, impact factor. It's not quite the land set, but it's a pretty respected journal. So, and it's nice to have that publication out there, aside from the fact that my name is on it. It also does one other interesting thing. Within the realm of, in the corner there, that little green part of the puzzle, equity and access, we've already done a very good job of getting community engagement for our environmental leadership and demonstrating it. This is another facet to the equity part, to the equity and access. It brings Nantucket's experience with coastal resilience into the scientific realm. This being a scientific publication, this puts us on the map within the scientific community. We've already been giving a lot of information to other communities, Provincetown, Falmouth, both are emulating and copying our Coast Resilience Plan. I just gave them the scope of services, and they copied it. I'll give it to anyone else that asks. It's just how we put it out there. So we've worked extremely well within our community. We've worked extremely well with other communities within the Commonwealth, and now within the scientific community. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? For the projects we're trying to get off the ground and get underway, a lot of these are things that you'll recognize from the Coast Resilience Plan. Maticate Road, Ames Avenue, this is something that's currently getting some traction and something that we're trying to fix, especially with the risky intersection between Maticate names. We've, or we're looking at getting one of the next key priorities, Strategic Retreat and Relocation Plan going with funding from a town meeting just passed. We also have the downtown neighborhood flood barrier, the two key parts to that, Easy Street and Washington Street. You can see a background image inlaid in there of Easy Street flooded in a snowstorm in '24. We're also looking at getting our Climate and Sustainability Plan, our Climate Action Sustainability Plan going. We have funding for it. I'm developing a scope of services, and we're looking at how that might get bid out. So that's one of the things to look out for. And just this past Monday, we've also launched our Environmental Justice Plan. We're also investigating how we can undertake air quality monitoring within the Natural Resources Department. We've really come to terms and have good information on our water quality. We've really come to terms and have good information on our water quality, but we're missing a key element, we've realized. So I'm just flagging it, this is something you might see a little bit more of, to understand how our air quality is on Ireland, because we've also learned, we don't have any air quality data. What we have here is forecast-type data, but not good data. And the nearest two sensors, there's one in the Town of Aquina on Martha's Vineyard, and there's one up just south of Provincetown. And we get something kind of like an average between the two of those. It's not the best. Now, I'm just going to briefly cover part of the next slide, if I might, Erica. We have a lot of outreach and education within the Natural Resources Department. For my part within, for our part within Division of Climate and Resilience, we have a lot surrounding coastal resilience. We've had all kinds of talks and presentations and open houses that were extraordinarily well-attended, such as the ones last summer at the Whaling Museum, where we had over 100 people attend, and I know some select board members got to come and see some of the interesting works we have there. We've also started other programs where we're working with Realtors to educate them with an accredited program, so that they can actually get continuing education points and understand the factors of erosion, so that they can best advise people who are coming to Nantucket and looking to purchase a home within, not just our erosion, but sorry, our coastal risk areas, whether it might also be coastal flooding or groundwater level rise issues. Speaking at conferences is one of the things that we do an awful lot of as well, and we've gone to great lengths to organize the Nantucket Coastal Conference. I think it's like every three years, it comes to Nantucket. And this year, in June, we had an entire gambit of new speakers, including the head of CCM, the Office of Coastal Zone Management, came to Nantucket and spoke at that conference, she was keynote speaker. We've had a pretty substantial impact, and we're hopefully fulfilling a lot of our environmental just, sorry, I used to environmental justice, our environmental leadership aspects. And I know that there are elements of the outreach and education that Tara would like to speak on as well.
Thanks again. Before I go through this kind of short list of how the Division of Shellfish and Aquatic Resources addresses education, I just want to say that this is probably the one thing that I feel like we are a little bit challenged on in our division, because we really have a hard time finding enough time in like our weekly schedule to kind of achieve the appropriate outreach for all the projects and the research that we have going on. But we are able to, this summer, we hosted weekly public tours and various volunteer opportunities. We always open the door to the Boys and Girls Club, they had a weekly slot all summer long, and we host them throughout the school year as well. We always welcome the public and private schools on island, as well as our college groups. The past two years, NIS Public School 4th Grade has used our facility as part of their STEM curriculum requirement. We've worked with Egan Maritime Institute and had two high school students over the past two years that we've mentored for three months at a time during the winter. Our staff also locally and regularly presents at local and regional conferences. And then, we do have a social media presence that we try to keep up every week. And then, lastly, our hatchery interns feel really well-prepared for employment or grad school. They really have a high rate of excess and success and acceptance with the additional skills that they gain working with us throughout the summer.
Next one. So with all that, as you can see, we're pretty busy, but we do have a lot of challenges that we do face and things that we wrestle with from time to time. Obviously, a lot of our projects are in the planning phase, but a lot of them go to construction and permitting and dealing with those increasing costs, and especially lately, increasing timeframes for permitting has been challenging. It's challenging to budget those out and see projects that get delayed from time to time just for permitting slowdowns. We also apply for a lot of competitive grants. And with those grants, we're starting to see things like environmental justice requirements come in. We're also trying to address those through some planning and some proactive measures. And again, just getting the word out for what's going on, getting people to participate and meaningfully participate across the community for all of these. A lot of these projects that we work on can be transformative for areas, whether it's dealing with flooding or erosion, but really trying to meet those competing interests and engaging those folks can be tricky. But we are trying, we're trying, open houses, we're trying, open houses in different locations and things to do, meeting people where they are, really working with groups that are interested, whether it's for resiliency projects, you know, groups like the Nantucket Yacht Club or Great Harbor Yacht Club, or private homeowners, and doing it. And then, we also have a really kind of core belief of putting our money where our mouth is, and trying things, and trying things that are new, and doing small pilot projects, and really trying to have those have a citizen science component too, for people to understand and be a part of the story of the natural resources out here, and really trying to engage and be part of that. So with that, I think we're happy to take any questions. Obviously, anyone that wants to come visit us, Erica, if you could pop to the last slide really quickly, come visit us, right? We're at the old fire station, we're at the hatchery, we're happy to talk to folks. And hear what people have to say, and we're also happy to answer any questions from you guys tonight. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you, NRD staff, excellent reporting. Okay, next, we have preliminary fiscal 2027 proposed capital projects, and we have three items under that topic. One is going to be an overview of fiscal '27 proposed capital projects, which I'm going to speak about in a second, and the Finance Director's going to take us through. And then, we have a couple of presentations on specific projects that are going to be more detailed, and these projects need a little bit of board direction. So on the overview, pursuant to the Town Charter, Section 4.2D3, the Town Manager is responsible for putting forward an annual capital budget. We are in the process of doing that and getting recommendations to the Capital Program Committee for its review. This presentation that we're giving to you tonight is a high-level overview. We have not yet completed our formal internal review of each project using the RORI evaluation system. That means Relative Order of Ranking Importance, that the Capital Program Committee has adopted. The committee recently requested some modifications to that evaluation system, which are being made by the software company that runs the system, and those have not been completed yet. So these are essentially all of the projects that have been submitted. They are not necessarily all going to be recommended by town administration. The focus is the general fund. When we've completed our RORI evaluation, we will come back to the board with an update, hopefully by mid-October. Meanwhile, the Capcom is proceeding with its review process and starts meetings next week, all of its meetings are public. We have not asked our departments to come in and present anything to you tonight on the projects that you're going to see, because again, it's meant to be high-level, but if you do have questions about them, we can get back to you. If we can't specifically answer them tonight, the two specific projects, Harbor Master Building and Town Employee Housing, will be taken, we will take you through those. And like I said, those need some board direction. So Brian's going to take us through this presentation, and I might chime in a little bit here and there. Brian?
Can you go to the first slide, Erica? So, as the Town Manager mentioned, we're going to take you through a high-level view, general fund and enterprise fund preliminary requests. We'll take you through some current unknowns as we proceed through this, discuss the next step. If there's any questions from the board, we're happy to answer them or provide additional information to you. We did include appendices that I don't believe we intend to take everybody through, but it does, is broken into general fund out-year capital, as well as the enterprise out-year capital as well. So, next slide, please, Erica. The manager started to kind of give a little bit of an update. We continue to refine the general fund and enterprise fund requests. We have, town administration has begun and conducted the sit-downs with all the departments, not only reviewing the current 27 requests that we're going to take you through, but all prior year requests with the departments. As mentioned, the Capital Program Committee did ask for some enhancements to the software that we use, that was developed by Plum Software, Plum Development, they maintain it, and they are the ones that are able to update it, and they're currently doing that. It was a rather large, extensive rewrite of the criteria and the evaluation methodology to rank the projects, so it is taking a little bit longer than we kind of anticipated that it would. But I think ultimately it'll deliver a little bit better review and ranking of the projects for all involved. Next Tuesday, the Capital Program Committee will begin the reviews. It'll be IT, Police, and Fire to be the first to go before the committee. And as mentioned last year, at the budget meeting in December presentation, we are planning on using OpenGov's online budget book, and we're working on incorporating the capital plan into that presentation as well. Next slide, please, Erica? Thank you. So, starting with town administration, they've put forth and discussed two projects, a potential for new modular mobile office trailers, it's $1.1 million, and then town-wide document management system, $250,000. This is a continuation of the ongoing program currently being worked on at Plus. This would move to then to Town Administration and 3 East Chestnut and all of the files that are located in those two buildings. Finance Department, we put forward a request in conjunction with IT to do an end-to-end review of the town's ERP system, a full in-depth review to determine whether Munis is still the best possible solution for the town as it moves into the future, or whether or not there are better alternatives. So this would be the first step in potentially what could be a multi-year conversion, but in order to understand what the next step is, this would be the starting point for us. Housing, Town Employee Housing Design and Construction, TBD. As Town Manager mentioned, there will be a follow-up presentation from the Housing Director on potential next steps related to that. ISGIS, $560,000. The main request in there is a replacement of the town phone system, and then the town computers is consistent with prior year allocation, and a potential of a new online permitting software. We are finding that EnterGov is, has some limitations for some other departments, other than sewer and the building department, so potential request to review new online software. I don't know that we will or we won't, but that is a request. Fire Department has two, has one request of $1 million for two compact all-terrain fire engines. Police Department, the largest request of the $5.6 million is the Phase IV of the seasonal employee dormitory improvements, that is at the Loran facility. Women's locker room expansion and vehicle security gates was also requested in this year's capital plan. Harbor Marine Department, the new Harbor Master Building is TBD, and the Police Chief and the Deputy Police Chief will be taking the board tonight through a presentation on what the status of that project is. Natural Resources, $4.7 million, the largest projects being the continued allocation of coastal resiliency on an annual basis of $1 million, and then $2 million for dredge plan implementation and maintenance dredging, are the largest requests within the Natural Resources Department. Oh, I'm sorry, next slide. Did I not say that? I apologize. Next one. Next one. Perfect, thank you. Coastal Resiliency, $750,000 for a 30% design for wastewater treatment facility resiliency. Next slide, please, Erica. Thank you. Central Fleet, within DPW, the majority of the requests here are for replacement vehicles for DPW, and there is one request for replacement of the OAH facilities truck. Within the Facilities Department itself at DPW, there's for-bathing beach building and grounds improvements, potential request for the additional $1.2 million in supplemental funding for the new DPW facility design. We have included $80 million, which was previously discussed, for the facility construction. And then, the next largest project is continued design and construction of replacement septic system for DPW. Parks and Recreation, $8 million is the largest request for Tom Nevers Debris Removal Project Phase II, which will begin the actual work. Winter Park Improvements, $2.1 million, and Tom Nevers Roller Hockey Rink Reconstruction, just over $1 million. Transportation, this is continuous with the annual allocation request for sidewalks, island-wide road improvements, multi-use path and cobblestones. The addition is $2 million for the Washington Street parking lot reconstruction, there's currently with McClure Engineering, they are reviewing and working on designs for a number of town parking lots, Washington Street included, so this would be for the reconstruction upon design completion. Next slide, please, Erica. Thank you. General Fund School, $13.1 million. There's two rather large capital requests this year, a substantial investment in additional and new IT infrastructure and equipment, $1.3 million. And then, the campus-wide improvements, the reconstruction of the track and football field area has been put forth by the school. Next slide, please. So summing up all the requests that were submitted to town administration and that we've reviewed with the departments, the fiscal '27 requests are $131,000,28,000. As you can see below that, the fiscal '26 requests were $229,300,000. Some of the larger requests included in '27 potentially is the $80 million for the construction of the new DPW facility, the Town Employee Housing Design and Construction, which is TBD, as we continue through that process, and then the new track and football field at $10 million. Next slide, please, Erica. Thank you. This is still very early in the process, I'd like to just keep mentioning that, so these proposed debt exclusions will likely be refined through the review of the capital projects and continued discussion with Capital Program, the board, and Finance Committee as we move towards the town meeting next year. Potential debt exclusions, discussed initially, Tom Nevers Debris Removal Project in the amount of $8 million. The track and football field campus improvements at the school, the $10.3 million. Employee housing in TBD. Somerset needs area construction of $43.3 million. You will, we will see this in the sewer enterprise fund, but this is put forth as a debt exclusion potentially consistent with the way that we had funded the Nantucket Harbor Shimo Plus Parcels extension, so we have potentially put that forward as a debt exclusion. And then TBD for the new DPW facility of $80 million. Excuse me. Thank you, Erica. Potential future debt exclusions, I don't know that I'm going to take the board through every one of these, but the total is, the bottom is just a little over $1 billion, which is a pretty daunting number and figure in the project list when we look at it. There's a lot of coastal resiliency projects in here. We have included at the bottom, the Island Home New Facility at $135 million with a TBD, as the process forward is still in discussion. Next slide. Actually, that concludes the general fund sum. If there's any questions now from the board, I'm happy to answer them or try to answer them.
Yeah, who's, sorry. Yeah, the Tom Nevers, what, the $8 million, what are we cleaning up? Is it all the foundation and the other parts of the building that were buried there? What is it?
It's not only the debris removal, but it involves, it also involves a coastal resiliency project there.
Right. Was that, was that, who was originally responsible for that? Is there any federal money or anything else that we could apply for?
Well, early on, that, quite some time ago, the federal government closed out the project from having any further responsibility with it. And at that time, of course, none of this stuff was visible, and now it's becoming visible, and now it's, there's been some ground-penetrating radar surveys of what is in there. And I don't know that we even know exactly what it is or where it came from. There are many local theories about it, and probably knowledge of what is in there from people who perhaps were around when that stuff.
Perhaps buried it.
Buried it. But I don't think we're going to get a lot out of the federal government. We did have someone who was trying to help us with, who has connections to the, to some federal funding opportunities to help us, but we really haven't gotten very far. That could be because of the change in administration, he started helping us before that. So, but there's, there's not, I don't think we're going to get a lot of help, but we'll keep trying.
All right, my other two comments, I just, I hate, I hate, eventually all we're going to have is trailers and parking lots. You know, I'd like to build, fix the building downtown or build a building. You know, I hate to see a million here and a million there, and $2 million for these trailers, and, oh, we can't do that, because it has to be a parking lot. I think we have to sort of come to grips with that at some point. And the other one is... And the other one is, I think that if we, if we, if the school, it's not under our purview, but I'll take this opportunity to say, if they put a track around that field or the football field, they will be making the hugest mistake that they could be making. You travel around the state and you see all these other fields and we have the nicest venue to play at and to view sports at. And if we put a track around it, everyone's going to be 30 or 40 feet away. You're going to be a lot further when you get your linguista sandwich. You're not going to be next to the field. And I think that we should be very careful about turning that into, you know, into what everybody else has. I think that we have something that's unbelievably special. If we want a track, move it to another area of the, of the place. Anyway, I just feel pretty strongly and I think it, it's, it's, it's something that we would only realize how special it was when it was gone. And so I hope we don't get rid of it. So there's my comments for tonight.
Thank you.
Next slide, Erica, please. Thank you. So, starting off with the Enterprise Funds for Fiscal '27, the airport presented to Town Administration a request of $3.9 million. The largest one being supplement, additional supplemental funding, which would be an AIP grant for the high last, high mast lighting program that was allocated at last year's town meeting for $700,000. Sewer and Stormwater, next, perfect, thank you, Erica. Sewer and Stormwater, sewer, as noted, the 43.3 million for the Somerset Needs Area Expansion, 9.2 million for a continued supplemental funding request for the Surfside Treatment Facility Upgrades Phase Two and $5 million supplemental funding for continued work for PFAS removal and treatment system. That is started to be, the scope has been started to be developed to understand what technologies are available out in the marketplace at this moment. Stormwater, 12.1 million with the largest being the Children's Beach Stormwater Pump Station Replacement. This is supplemental funding to the 4.3 million that was allocated a few annual town meetings ago of 10, just over $10 million. Next slide, please, Erica. Thank you. Solid Waste. This would be actually additional funding if, at this year's town meeting, last year's town meeting, excuse me, we approved some money for the second scale. This second scale and Scale House Design Permitting and Construction, 1.6 million would be for the actual construction and installation of a second scale, which I think would help the operations and provide some redundancy at the facility as well. Next slide, please, Erica. Thank you. So, all told, Enterprise Fund summary, $78 million this year. Last year's preliminary requests were 38.1 million, the largest, including the 43.3 for Somerset Needs Area, 10 million for the supplemental funding for Children's Beach, 9.2 for supplemental funding for Surfside Facility Phase Two upgrades, and then 5 million for the PFAS removal and treatment supplemental funding. And next slide, please. And I will turn it back over to Town Manager at this point.
Okay, so, should my mic on? Sorry, thank you. So, some of the unknowns that we have here, and these are not too different from any other year for the most part. We don't have in here necessarily new initiatives that might come out of the board's strategic planning process, which isn't happening until October. Inflationary and tariff impacts on out-year projects, I think, you know, that's just a standard unknown right now everywhere. The capacity that we have to execute projects that are, that are in here, we, I think it's safe to say, we don't have that capacity our, with the existing staff to do all of it in every year. They obviously span fiscal years, so where some of this is, needs to be juggled a bit. The Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee Recommendations. So there, the recommendations are, are more or less worked into the capital improvement plan that are in the existing CRP. However, we've had some recent discussions about the fact that it's probably time for a little re-review of those projects because there's been some things that have changed. We now have, for example, some data on tide levels and things like that that we could compare to the projections that were made that the Coastal Resiliency Plan projects were based on. So some of that is, still needs to be reviewed. The Park and Rec Master Plan, again, there could be maybe more specific to Tom Nevers. That may depend on some of the Coastal Resiliency Plan changes potentially. And the scope of PFAS remediation, that, that is, Town of Nantucket is doing, as we have said several times now, and the state has acknowledged, more than perhaps any other town in the Commonwealth on this. And we've spent millions of dollars looking at how we're going to deal with this. The water company is in the process of installing a mobile treatment facility at one of the wells. I'm not sure it's totally complete yet, but that, that's a, that's a good amount of money. And we need to keep working on how we're going to deal with this. And obviously, some of the PFAS presence, maybe all of it, is not within our control. There will have to be treatment options that are explored, installed and permitted and examined and all of that.
Libby, also, the hiring of Andrew Shapiro, who I understand, the environmental contaminant specialist for the town, he is the only one of his kind in the nation, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. I don't know if Greg's online to comment, but yes, I think you're right.
Got it. But he's terrific and he's been responding to constituents' questions. I've sent him a few things and it's, he's been great, so.
He is really, really good. So, next steps, we can go to that slide, I think. As I noted earlier, we need to complete our review and rankings of the projects. The Capital Program Committee will continue, will start meeting and continue meeting until their reviews are complete. We will need to finalize our funding recommendations, some of which are contingent upon what we have for free cash, which we don't know just yet. And the Select Board and FinCom review of the Capital Program Committee's recommendations, which typically doesn't happen until around January. I do want to mention, before we launch into this, two other specific projects. The Island Home, this, this has come up a few times. And if the board will recall, after the election, there was a sort of a debrief on the Island Home. We were trying to figure out what, what to do next. And there were a few additional steps we were going to take. And in no particular order, they include having some discussions with the land bank about the potential acquisition of the East Creek property. There have been some very preliminary discussions about that, and I think there is some interest there that remains to be explored and it kind of somewhat depends on what we are going to do. Are we going to build a new facility? In which case, the current site would become available for the senior center that we want to build there and could the land bank make a purchase to offset the cost of either the Island Home or the senior center? We have a survey that's just about ready to go that the board talked about, exploring with the public, would you vote for an aisle, a new facility? And it's got different amounts and some other information to maybe help us gauge community interest in, in pursuing the project. Cost analysis of a lesser, operational cost analysis of a lesser-sized facility, looking at a lesser-sized facility and what the, what, what sort of a cost reduction that might mean. Also, elimination of some of the energy-saving measures that were part of the project, solar, geothermal, things like that. And we talked about potentially, is there room to have a discussion with Sherwin Commons about a different sort of a housing plan? And those, I think there's been some initial discussions with them about that. And lastly, so that people really more understand, what are the closing costs and timing? And that, that is a fairly straightforward procedure, actually. And I, I can't quite recall if the administrator has come in to talk to the, the full board about that, but, but he could if, as needed. So, we've gotten a, a bit of inquiry about the Island Home. What, what are you doing about it? Is it coming back? And I think for at least 2026 annual town meeting, I, I don't think we're ready right now to say if it's coming back or not, but there would need to be a lot of work done if it were to come back for 2026. The other project is the DPW facility and we are working internally on determining what kind of cost reductions might be able to be made with that. And we're trying to put some, hopefully some citizen helpers together to give us a more community review of it. So, but to the point earlier made about the cost of projects, they are costly and there is not a whole lot of leeway that municipalities have to reduce costs in a way that people are going to say, oh, yeah, this is so much cheaper because of procurement requirements and obviously the cost of Nantucket projects. It's well-known that Nantucket projects are much higher because of everything that has to be done to do a project there. So, if, unless, go ahead.
I mean, what jumps out at me is that I, I don't know that we're ready to bring back an $80 million DPW proposal. You know, for similar reasons that the Island Home may not be ready. I just, I don't think I've got it. I, I know many reasons why it's needed, but I think we may have to really extensively relook at a different way to do that, to get a passing vote.
Yeah, I've heard, I don't, I haven't heard a lot of positive about that. I hear thing, I think we, what I hear is fix the roads. You know, fix the roads, take care of the other stuff first and then, you know, and then come to us for that. That's kind, and that has been a shift from, you know, various people over the last five or six months. You know, I, I don't know if people's belts, you know, have tightened their belts a little bit or something, but over the last few months, I've, I've felt that shift from people. And that's been kind of the comment. And I think it was also, it was, we just got out of summer and it was a bit of mayhem and, you know, and so I don't know, but that's what I'm hearing.
So, if there's no other questions, we can move into the specifics of the other project, projects. We have the Harbor Master Building project. And then our Town Employee Housing Capital. The Harbor Master Building has, it's been, it's been around for a while and we've bit it out unsuccessfully a couple of times, not having enough of an appropriation. And I think we need to get some confirmation from the board as to if we're proceeding with this project. Or what? Charlie?
Good evening. I'm Charles Gibson. I've been the project manager of this Harbor Master site for 2014. It was when we started the needs analysis for the Harbor Master Building, which encompasses a majority is basically a public restroom facility, showers and servicing the waterfront and the town pier and the general popular tourist population that's downtown in the summer. So, early on, not to belabor this over 10-year saga, but there was a needs analysis done. The town hired Stephen Kellerher Architects and did a structural analysis of the building and a needs analysis assessment of the uses and the number of people who were visiting the island and the facilities down there. So based on that, Erica, if you can just kind of slide through these, I'm not going to go line by line, but we did a, the needs analysis, did a cost estimate. And the cost estimate came fairly in that we could build the building for, you know, a little over 2.5 million. So, the, when we received the appropriation, the approval from town meeting to proceed with this project, we hired architects, Stephen Kellerher Architects, who had done similar facilities for the state at Horse Neck Beach and had done other waterfront municipal buildings and did a design. It seemed okay. We had a committee, the building committee, and we had gone through various options of siting, design, and we came up with a construction documents and put the, put the project out to bid in 2021 of May, May 2021. And bids came in over $5 million. So we had estimated that there was a $2.5 million estimate from a professional estimator based on those design documents. And the bids came in, well over budget came in, the lowest bid came in at $4.8 million. So, we had an initial appropriation of 3.4 million. So we were, you know, over budget by 1.4 million. So we looked at everything again and then one thing that happened was COVID. So COVID, as you all know, really put a damper on getting projects bid, people bidding on them. We put the project out to bid again with the town meeting supplemental appropriation. Now, we had $5.4 million, thinking that would be more than enough for this project. In 2023, we had a, a single bid come in and that was $8.9 million. So again, over budget by $6 million. So, and as you all may recall, the construction costs just after COVID, the pricing, the shortages, everything was so far out of line. So, we took the position, we had to let, let the market settle. Everyone, or, you know, we talked to the architects that let it settle and we did. So, we wanted to put the project out to bid again and then we had a dispute with the architect who wanted more money to do it. So, Stephen Kellerher Architects was removed and we went out to bid again, though this time with a new position of trying to value engineer this project. Why has it been coming in way over budget both times we put it out? So, Upland Architects was hired after competitive process to do a value engineering study. They looked at the siting, they looked at the design, they gave us some options of how, of what could lower the cost. And based on a review and evaluation, the siting in Kellerher Design, basic design was retained. However, we approached this, like, what can we do to reduce costs? So one of those was, was an elevator in the building. By going to the state seeking a waiver from the Architectural Access Board, we were able to get a waiver on the elevator. That saves about a quarter of a million dollars. We also approached the state about not putting in a chairlift. So using a chairlift, as you know, this is in a flood zone and as you recall, all of the buildings down there have to be at a certain height. It's a VE11 zone, which is one of the highest flood zones on the island. You've seen the buildings of going up along Eastern Street, Holbert Ave, even the Gwacki House move on Washington Street just last year. That's, that's the elevation that we need to be at and that's by code. But by putting in the chairlift, we can avoid having wraparound handicap ramps. And that was the problem for the size of the building and maintaining the one-foot and 12-foot rise to have a building wrapped with a handicap ramp to maintain that handicap access that's required by code. So, a cost savings there was to eliminate those ramps, put in the chairlift. That was approved. We did receive waivers from the state for that. So, where we are now, we just received another estimate from another professional estimator, RGB, and that cost estimate now with these cost savings is $6.1 million. We have on account right now available just under 5 million. So, we have a deficit of approximately $1.5 million. So this is where, what do we do now? We have looked at this project from a needs analysis. The building is structurally deficient. It is not code compliant and the floors in the public restroom there are literally collapsing. So, we need to decide what we have to do. And this is the direction that the board, this is not on a town meeting, you know, appropriation track. We need some direction from the board as to where we need to go with this. As I said, we, it's a $1.5 million deficit that we're projecting for construction in 2026 and that has the escalators built into it. As I said, there's a long, drawn-out process. I can answer all the questions that you have, which is maybe the best way to do it. One of the things we were looking at is funding sources for this $1.5 million. I off the wall said, why don't we use wind farm money, which is sort of looked at, but it's available funding and it certainly is a waterfront-dependent use. And we can, we have construction documents ready to go and we just need to know what to do.
I have a question. On one of the last slides, you had a single story and you shrunk it down. Is that what you've had to do to get it down?
Well, what we did, excuse me, sorry about that. What we did was by eliminating the wraparound decks and putting in the chairlifts, we still run up against that 30-foot height limit. So by doing some changes to the original foundation design, designed to meet the code compliance, we were up at having a 10-foot first-floor ceiling height, just for public spaces. We reduced that ceiling height to eight feet. So we've raised the floor level up, but still, the building height is still the same. The first floor height, instead of being 10-foot interior, is now eight feet. It's still, you know, functional, but we save a lot of money by not having to have flow-through doors, a lot of foundation enhancements to meet the new building codes. So that was a significant cost savings, just by tweaking that floor level a little bit.
Originally, you had, one of the goals was upstairs, was to have a room for the, I think it was for the lifeguards, et cetera, we're going to meet there. They don't do that now.
No, no, no. There was never a room for the lifeguards. It was for the lifeguard supervisory staff, desks that do the hiring, that do the supervising, you know, that they run, you know, two or three people almost year-round now to do the hiring of the 75 lifeguards that we hire seasonally.
And they'd, so they'd still be in there?
Yeah. It's all, it's office staff desks, you know, partitions in the Harbor Master office, very small meeting space, you know, basically a conference table on the second floor.
And then, and so the main thing is the bathroom?
Correct. That building is a large toilet shower facility. That, that is the main, main function of it.
One other question. Did you ever look at doing it across the street, doing it elsewhere so you could keep that running?
Well, it could be anywhere, but, I mean, it's a waterfront-dependent use, which is the best uses for it to be on the waterfront, because they have to also maintain supervision over the town pier and that access coming in. So that, I mean, you could put the office anywhere, but the, the access to their response boats and the supervision of the town pier itself, which we have just completed, you know, a $6 million investment and should be.
And so some of it has to be there, but some of it can be elsewhere if you had to.
If, if we had to, you know, but it still would require, you know, supervisory staff to be there. And, you know, it's been, it's been, been there. And it would be, suggest that if the land bank had maintained their thrust to open up the waterfront there, but Kotolak's building there now is not moving. And so that issue has sort of been pushed aside.
I mean, I would personally like to get this built while, before it goes up more. And I think it, I think it is heavily used and needed. And I think it is important to have, you know, buildings that meet coastal codes but that are water-dependent on the waterfront. Brooke?
Yeah, ma'am, sure. I completely agree. I think this is a good opportunity to get this project complete since the delta between the funding is not terribly far off. And this seems like a good use of the offshore wind money that the town did receive from the blade failure to meet that delta, to see this project through.
I tend to agree, of course. How do we know it's 1.5, it may be in reality, two, two and a half? I mean, things go up. I mean, you're comfortable it's only a 1.5 difference?
This number has been vetted extensively. This is RGB writer Bucknell Levitt, professional estimator. They have worked in the Nantucket factor. This is prevailing wage project, you know, and it's been stressed, you know, Upland has done other waterfront uses. They've done a Harbor Master Building in Plymouth and Buzzet's Bay as well. And they, they seem confident with it, and it has escalators built into this number for a July 2026, you know, build, so.
Well, you may be right, but my experience of my three years on this board is that money seems to escalate.
It does.
Yes.
And, but I have, I've seen the numbers and I have, you know, I just received the estimate today from RGB, and it's, it seems in line with what we've been saying.
It, it's so frustrating to have a project linger this long for so many multitudes of reasons that I agree with Tom and Dawn that we're a working waterfront community and we should have the facilities, the safety facilities to manage that waterfront. I believe in moving it forward. As far as the funding source, we need to have a robust conversation about what's available from the wind settlement and what our priorities are with that fund, with, with the funds. And we're going to be having a conversation about the claims fund. And so until we really know what the number of the dollars available are with a lot of other things that need to be considered, I don't want to tag that at this time, but I do as a, as a priority, I think we should move this project forward. I agree.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, I'll come right back to you, with it potentially coming out of wind, but we do have to go through that whole claims process. So do we have another funding source?
Other than a raise and appropriate, no.
What about free, free cash?
You're not allowed to say that. You know that.
Well, if I might, free cash could potentially be a source, but that would have to go to town meeting.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but just to have a couple of alternatives. Rather than a new borrowing.
I'm wondering if it shouldn't be back across the street. I just, knowing, you know, and I want to make sure whatever we do, that it is, it's vetted for coastal resilience impacts for 50 years, 30 years, 50 years.
That has been done. We've gone to conservation already. We have, we have all our permits. We have to go back to HDC regarding the tweaks in the ramps around the building. However, we do have a CONCOM approval. It's been vetted through the VE zone. And the problem you run into across the street is where do you put it? We're still in the velocity zone across the street.
Yeah.
And then you're going to lose town pier parking or you lose, there's a lot of things that you have to give up if you want to, you know, put it across the street. So back, we had this discussion several years ago and, you know, sort of always came back to where it is. You know, we, we have in place a plan for temporary facilities while the building is being constructed. Those would be, you know, we're looking at leaving them on the site further down, as you recall, that, that area, there's a small, like, open space to the west of the existing building that we could put temporary facilities there as well. And no matter what happens, you know, if you put it across the street, something has to go that's over there.
And there is a lot of activity that we'd now be having across the road.
I agree. I don't think that's pragmatic, and I think the cost of starting over again and design could be far greater than the 1.5 million dollars.
Yeah, 100%, but I think also the vision down there. I mean, this can fit in the vision, this can fit in the vision that's down there. But I do think, I think we're also, we've got a set mindset. Our mindset is kind of like, oh, it's going to be like this, and it's not. And, and so the, you know, really, are we going to come up with the 200 million for Washington Street? Are we going to be able to keep the water out of there long-term? Maybe we're, like, there's some things that we really, I don't know. I would like to put some more, I mean, we're going to move forward in some manner, but I think as a community, we need to sort of be coming to grips with some of that, you know, so.
I guess it sounds like the board is in general agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, of moving forward with what has been presented here, provided that the funding can be secured, which will possibly be known before town meeting if the wind fund were to pan out. Or we will have to go to town meeting and make an appropriation, possibly from free cash or some kind of borrowing, yet to be determined. But hopefully, we'll be able to sort through exactly what we're looking at for a gap. Did you say, what did you say it was around one and a half?
1.5.
Oh, okay. That's, okay. All things considered, that's.
Half a shed out of the delta.
So proceed with, like, going back to HDC, making sure they don't have changes and all that kind of stuff?
Well, we have HDC to, you know, we've been working with them through this revision process already, and they're generally in favor of, you know, what, what's been done. CONCOM, the footprint's not changing. So, you know, if we, our plan is to put this out to bid within the next, you know, month or two, so we will have a number going into town meeting time. So that, that's the goal, that we'll have finished construction documents ready for bid within a month or two. And that's, you know, now we know, let's, we can move forward and we'll have a good number and then we'll be able to look at funding sources.
Okay. Do you want us to make a vote? Or is that enough direction?
That's, I don't hear anybody speaking in opposition, so I guess I would consider that an endorsement. I just want to add too, that even though we, a good amount of that facility is bathroom facilities and shower facilities and things like that for many, many users of the town pier, it is also a Harbor Master Building, and it does serve a very important purpose for the oversight of the town pier, which is incredibly busy in the summertime, not just with people coming over, but seasonal people have their boats there, there's a good, strong commercial presence there. And it, and it does take a lot of oversight and they really do kind of need to be right there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Employee Housing Capital Project. The housing director and the deputy and some other staff people have worked really hard on the project presentation that you're going to see right, right now. And we are feeling that it's a really important project to put forward. We, I think we heard loud and clear at town meeting that people were uncomfortable with the description, or perhaps in some people's minds, lack thereof, and the, the numbers. So we have taken that to heart and developed a focused presentation to address both of those things. And I'll turn it over to.
Thank you. Kristy Ferentzler, the municipal housing director. Tonight, I'm going to walk you through a capital funding proposal to develop municipal housing on Wait Drive. This project directly advances your strategic housing goals and is essential to maintaining the services Nantucket relies on. I'm going to try to run through these quickly, giving you a background on the planning process and explain why the development is the best solution. I'm going to start by saying, I know it's almost 8:15, 8:30, so I'm going to try to go through a lot of this, but as Libby mentioned, it's a really important project. There's a lot of information in the slides and in your packet that if I glaze over, it's not because it's not important, it's because it's there for you to read. Oh, you're on that slide. Okay. So we'll start with the big picture around housing on Nantucket. As I like to say, we don't just have a housing crisis, we have an affordability crisis. The median home price is well over $3 million, with median monthly rents over $3,000. And that's not for a home, that's for a one-bedroom or sometimes even shared housing. A median family income is $163,000, and 65% of our dwellings are occupied seasonally, which limits the amount of year-round housing. So all of this really puts a strain on our employees to be able to find and secure year-round, stable and affordable housing. Simple economics tells us that high demand with low supply drives prices even higher and wages just simply can't keep up with that. Next slide, please. The select board has recognized this challenge, and you've incorporated these two goals into your strategic plan around prioritizing and providing housing for municipal employees. Next slide, please. So housing has become a critical recruitment and retention tool. The housing department has expanded with the addition of the rental property manager and the deputy housing director to be able to take on expanding this program. We've used this to be able to help new employees either be able to find housing as they're coming to the island or starting working for the town, either temporary or permanent rentals. But we still see this as a challenge when we're looking at 45 vacancies as of August 1st. And while we recognize that some of those are new positions that were approved at town meeting, there are still key positions in our town that are needed to be filled. We also see that we get a limited candidate pool and housing costs eliminate qualified applicants. So on the flip side, we see this as equally straining retention. In a survey, 52% of employees said that housing could determine whether they stay working for the town or not. And 2/3 of respondents expect to lose their current housing within the next three years, indicating that they don't have sustainability. So the bottom line is we can't sustain municipal services if we don't solve for housing. Next slide, please. So the housing department is currently managing 43 total units. 25% of, sorry, 25 of those rentals, 25 of those are rentals with private homeowners and 18 are municipally owned. One thing I just wanted to note is in 2024, collective bargaining allowed us to house union employees, and that's really grown our program. And so that's why we've had a lot of calls to action to encourage homeowners to rent to municipal employees and to help us secure those leases. We currently house public safety, DPW, OIH school, to name a few, and as well as managing eight hybrid and remote workers who come here for projects from time to time. We also manage the Wait Drive dorm and ongoing renovation projects on existing properties. In short, we already have deep experience managing municipal employee and we're ready to expand. Next slide, please. So the current challenges that we're facing. Relying on rentals means that we have no control over rent increases or whether or not landlords want to renew. We often hear that there's limitations with the landlords, they, you know, rightfully so, want to have a lot of say into how their property is maintained. No pets are allowed. We have a lot of employees on our waitlist who have a pet, so we're trying to sort this puzzle where somebody's offering a rental, but we don't have an employee that matches what they have, or they're offering a four-bedroom house and we have a single employee looking for housing. So it's just become a little bit of a difficult thing to manage not having the ownership of our own units. On our waitlist, we at any given time have about 30 employees, mostly needing one and two bedrooms, and as I mentioned, mostly requiring pets. So renting alone is unstable and expensive. Next slide, please. So how do we meet the board's goals and improve retention and recruitment? And the answer is to own and develop municipal employee housing. So my team and I have spent the past 18 months trying to answer three key questions. How much housing do we need? Where should we build it? And what should we build? To answer these questions, we went through the, the process listed above. We formed an internal municipal housing work group. We distributed an employee housing survey. We evaluated all town-owned parcels, and we developed different concept plans for what might be possible. Next slide, please. So to walk you through the survey, the work group developed a survey and received 260 responses. The data tells us that many employees are housing cost burden, spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And nearly 1/3 live with people who they wouldn't otherwise choose to live with, highlighting the lack of adequate housing options that they're able to find on the market. Additionally, 2/3 are at risk of losing their housing in the next few years, which again, puts a strain on trying to keep operations running for the town. Next slide, please. We also analyzed household demographics. We found that roughly 70% of households have three or fewer people and that nearly have children or plan to have school-aged children within the next five years. Employees requesting two to three bedrooms, privacy and pet-friendly housing. Pets keep coming up. This tells us that our design should This tells us that our design should focus on appropriately sized, single-family style homes that balance affordability with livability. Next slide, please. So we took all of that information and looked through all of the town-owned parcels. And I'm happy to walk you through the pros and cons of each parcel that we examined, but Wait Drive emerged as the best location. The parcels sit between the municipal dorm and Habitat for Humanity homes that are already constructed. As you can see on the slide, it's the highlighted three lots on the right side of Wait Drive. It offers access to municipal operations, public transportation and integration into the broader residential neighborhood. It also provides a lot of flexibility and development concepts as it's on municipal sewer and water. Next slide, please. So our team went to the drawing board once we determined the parcel and worked through many iterations, which are included in the back of your packet. The one that we would recommend is reconfiguring the three parcels into five lots through an A and R application with a planning board. On each lot, you would construct two dwellings or three total units, a mix of single-family homes and duplexes or ADUs. Each lot could yield between five and seven bedrooms for a total of twenty-five to thirty-five bedrooms across the site. And what we did is worked with an architect to draw out what the potential kind of box look would be. We don't have exact how many bedrooms with this, but like I said, there's a lot of flexibility in it. Next slide, please. This again is just a visual schematic to show the concept design. The elevation shows how the homes would fit seamlessly into the neighborhood's residential character. And we very much tried to mimic what Habitat for Humanity has done in those, that gray area to the right. Those are their existing homes that are, four to the six are occupied and two will be moving in shortly. Next slide. Thank you. So the next steps from the housing department would be to hire an O P M utilizing previously appropriated funds from 2022 to guide site design, permitting and developing bids for modular construction. Brian is here to talk and can talk about the procurement process, but our plan would be to release the R F P this winter and have bids in hand prior to going to town meeting. If approved, construction could begin and occupied in 2028. Next slide, please. So the big question here is what does it cost? Last year, we brought this plan to town meeting, requesting to develop three of those lots, three of the five, and requested fourteen million dollars. Concerns were raised about potential overruns and repeated funding requests. This time, we're proposing a phased procurement process so bidders could submit a base bid for the construction of just one lot and then alternatives for each additional lot. This way, we can go to town meeting saying to construct this one lot with three dwelling units, it would cost X. Very rough cost estimate that we had from 2024 is three and a half to four million per lot. A lot of things have changed in that time and I'm always trying to update information, but can't do so without taking these next steps to hire an O P M and start to go through that process. Doing all this will also provide us with detailed information for out years of construction costs. So this next slide, my team looked at, if we're not going to move forward with developing and investing in municipal housing at Wait Drive, what are our, what are our alternatives to meet the need of the employees who we are currently housing and the thirty that are on our waitlist and growing? So what we'll never know is why voters denied the project at town meeting. Was it the costs or was it the disagreement with the idea of investing in municipal employee housing? Alternatives come with significant trade-offs. We can continue to rent private, from private homeowners. As I mentioned, the challenges that we have with not having control over long-term leases, doing one year at a time raises concerns with our staff. We're also seeing really high rental increases in the market with three bedrooms being between fifty-five hundred and seventy-five hundred. We could go out and purchase existing homes. My team took a look at the 2024 sales data. We looked at if we were to secure fifteen units, which is, would be the development of all five lots on Wait Drive. And if you just took the lowest fifteen transactions from 2024, it'd be fourteen point nine million. And that includes a property that was on Sheep Pond Road. So that's the lowest transactions, but not ideal for municipal housing. If you then, we looked at that data and looked at kind of move-in ready, similar to Nine Goldfinch that was purchased by the town, fifteen units would be eighteen point two million. So to underscore, it's an investment in municipal housing if this is something that we want to continue to provide. We could partner with private developers, similar to what we did with Richmond and Wiggles Way, where we advocate for municipal preference. We still have the challenge of not controlling the rental amounts or rent increases and no control over increasing access to parking or availability of pets. Lastly, which I would not recommend is relying on off-island housing. I think this could increase employee turnover and reduces their ability to integrate into the Nantucket community. Next slide, please. So basically, to wrap up, developing the housing units on Wait Drive align with the strategic goals of the select board and it transforms the housing goals from aspirational to operational and creates a coordinated, sustainable solution for municipal workforce housing. Next slide. Last slide. So the plan is an investment in stability and efficiency and it protects us against the volatility and uncertainty in the rental market. Additionally, it centralizes the management and reduces the cost and complexity. All homes would share the same materials and systems, making repairs and upkeep much simpler for the housing department. Last slide. So tonight I'm seeking direction from the board. Specifically wanting to know if you endorse placing this proposal of constructing one lot on the 2027 annual town meeting warrant and ballot? If you support the configuration of the lots and moving forward with this build-out with a multi-year approach to creating fifteen units? And do you approve the procurement approach of putting this out to bid ahead of town meeting? And thank you for your time and consideration and I welcome your questions.
Brock.
I appreciate the thoroughness of the plan and I think the community will appreciate the thoroughness of the plan. I think the only thing I would add, I'm in favor of this, one hundred and fifty percent. Public outreach. Let's try to figure out why there's resistance. Has been resistance at town meeting a couple of years in a row to, I don't, I don't know that we're getting the message out as clearly as we could about the logic behind this and, and the underlying need. I think that there's, there's still a false sense in the community that we shouldn't be doing this because we didn't have to do it before and people who work for the town, you know, have worked for the town for a long time, were able to secure housing and why are we doing it for the newcomers? We just need to communicate more clearly about what the crisis is and how it's impacting operations and maybe build some support and maybe get, solicit some feedback so we understand what it is we need to explain better. I said that in a very unclear and roundabout way because it's late.
Some of us have been talking about the town needs to do this for thirty years. And, and so some of the hesitancy, even, you know, even four or five years ago from some of the department heads were, we don't need it, people want to house our guys. We don't need that. And it, so, and it's not true. It wasn't true thirty years ago. It's not true now. But, you know, but that, so some of the hesitancy has been built in because that was the, that was the word that was going back out to the public. And the, I think the public that needs to hire staff knows that you have to house people or you don't have a business. And, you know, and knew that a long time ago. I think the town is unfortunately playing catch-up. And so it's, and it has, you know, so we have to overcome that, sort of the years of, oh no, we don't really need that. You know, we're fine, we don't need that. We have to overcome that and we have to show how it's more cost-effective to do this, you know, do this with new buildings and in one place. Yeah, I could nitpick the design a little bit, but I won't. But I think that, you know, but I think that we have to say that and we have to say, if you want to have your potholes fixed, if you want to have services, this is what we need to do. You know, and I think what I'm hearing from people is they don't want to do it all. You know, they don't want to do all the housing, you know, for other people and other businesses. They want the town to take care of the town's housing. And that's what I'm hearing loud and clear from people. And I think if we try to do it all, this could be, you know, this could be lost again. You know, so I think we as, we have to, we have to try to concentrate on town stuff in my opinion, if we want this to pass. I think if we say, we need this and we need another sixty million for a whole bunch of other things, then I think the people are getting ready to revolt. And, and I think some of them are really close. So anyway.
I think it will be much more successful going with bids in hand. I think it always is because the numbers are real. I'd like to, you know, definitely be in a situation where we're not going to have to go back and ask for any more money. I think that that was a real issue with some of these other projects. And I like the bid alternative that we could decide, okay, we're not going to go for all of it at once. Because I do think that we have to talk as a board, like which, where are the highest priorities? And we need to talk about this in strategic planning with town administration because we have office needs, we have facility needs, we have housing needs, we have infrastructure needs and we can't take that many millions of dollars to town meeting at the same time because then a whole bunch of it fails. So there has to be a strategy. But, but I like the approach and I think you're going to need more parking spaces, unfortunately.
You said that better than I did, Tom. That was much nicer than my comment.
But, yes. Go ahead, Tom.
Chrissy, there are so many, after being on the trust for a while and learning about all this and, you know, working for the reps office, there are so many complexities to this and so many complexities that your office have to deal with. I mean, one thing that you pointed out was pets, you know, and these are like, there are human issues and economic issues and all these things compounded. And the other thing is the, well, there's several other things, but the Nantucket factor. Everything is more expensive here. We are the outlier of all outliers on the, you know, on the cost scale. And I just find this, this nearly two-thirds of employees expect to lose their current housing within three years extremely disturbing. And to Matt's point, and I think the whole, all the board feels this way, is that the Commonwealth is finally catching up sort of with us, hence the A D U law, we've had tertiarys for a while and, and these municipal preference and Forable Homes Act and seasonal communities are kind of the tools, how we're going to be able to solve this. So I, I think this is, this is just one project and it's only fifteen units and it's not, this is not the solution to everything, but I think this is well thought out and I'm not sure what the alternative is. Like this, this is what we must do to be able to, as Matt said, provide the services for, that people want to be able to run this town. So I think this is really good work and I'm sure you're going to bring a lot of these facts and figures to the September thirtieth strategic planning housing meeting with S B Planning Board, et cetera, et cetera. And, and I think, I think, really encourage the public to watch that meeting and learn about kind of the macro issues that your, that the town admin, your department, the rest of the town has to deal with because it's extremely complicated. It's not just the numbers, it's not just the human side. Anyway, I'm a soapbox, but I'll stop there.
May it also be useful to take, say, we own eighteen units that our employees are in. What are the most, what's the aggregate cost of the most recent fifteen that were purchased? I think that that would be a good data point.
Try to look into that. Not many have been recent, but yes.
Yeah, and how much work is still needed on that?
Or what's the value of them if we were to buy them today? In comparison.
Well, I think the interesting thing is that, that, first of all, two things. If we're buying, we're competing with the very people who want to buy at the lower end of the market and stay here long-term and own a home. So to have us bidding against other year-rounders trying to be year-rounders in a homeownership environment is not a great thing either. So, so we'd, I mean, ultimately I'd love to have people transition out of these rental properties into homeownership and so we should be putting, so.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting we would buy.
No, no, I'm saying, it's why we shouldn't do it.
And what's the difference between all the?
But as an alternative, it's one of the alternative strategies you had is go out in the market and buy units instead. And I don't want to be competing against people trying to own a home either, you know?
Just going to comment. I think, Brock, you hit on one of the reasons there's some opposition to this. I've heard people, well, I'm struggling to buy a home, why should, the town's going to buy one for an employee. That's not fair to me. That's what people are thinking. And that, that's what they're thinking, so that has to be dealt with. And a historical point, I'm trying to struggle. Matt said, you know, thirty years ago, twenty years ago, people said, we didn't need this. What's happened in thirty years? Why do we need it now? Housing's gone down, houses gone up.
We've built, we've built a lot of houses, but they're, they are not for us. They're not for workforce. The houses that were built, that what we're catering to is not for the workforce and it's not for the year-round. We're catering to, you know, two-thirds of our, of the island is something else. And, and a lot of the, the low-end houses, you're, you're not just competing with islanders who are trying to buy that house on Tacoma or Rugged, et cetera. You're competing with someone who wants to build a complex there with a pool because they can get a lot of money for it. And so that's, so that's the reality is that we are in a, you know, we're in a tight position. And I think that, you know, so what is different? I think it's that we, the island is still really pretty nice and, you know, and the demand is through the roof.
Well, it's still pretty nice, but we're getting to a point where it might not be so nice because it's too many people. Houses are too expensive.
Yogi Berra, Yogi Berra. It's so nice, it's everyone, no one, it's so busy, no one wants to be there.
The island's also become way more accessible.
Yes.
You know, we didn't used to have fast ferries and.
Telecommuting and all that.
It's on demand.
I mean, we do have a lot more land in conservation, which is a good thing, but it's definitely put pressure on housing. So there's a number of factors. But yes, Nantucket is very popular, I said, when we were talking about the movie, that we've been branded.
I think that what you're, the on-demand part, Don, has had a huge impact. You know, like the boats and the planes and people getting here quickly has had a huge impact.
And if I could just add in, yesterday we were testifying at the state house for the transfer fee and Penny Die, as a Realtor, made the point that right now on the market, there's only three listings under two million dollars. So it's just an affordability crisis. Like when we testified five years ago for the transfer fee, the median home price was one point five and it's now three point five. You know, five years ago, you maybe could have bought a condo on Nantucket and today you just can't.
Chrissy, this may be more of a longer question that can save for September thirtieth, but just quickly, on the capital presentation that, that Brian and Libby did, I noticed that there's no line item, budget item in, for the school. And so can you, can you kind of give a brief overview of how you work with the schools and what employee, and how does that work and how do they, how do they fund that? Just, just in the most general sense, maybe we can touch back another time.
Yeah, I think as we're going through budgets, we can go through, but we've been trying to consolidate everything to be under the housing department and assisting airport or water in the school and trying to secure housing. What they do right now is they have a housing coordinator, it's part of somebody else's job that helps kind of get information out. So if a landlord reaches out, they say, I have a two-bedroom, they kind of send that to the list of employees. So we're trying to work with them to go through our process, which is filling out our form. And we work in kind of being that person in between and securing the lease. So we're trying to work together, but a big part of that is budget and, and having funding for that. And so I think that's, school is going to come into that conversation as well and post September thirtieth, that'll be a good thing to focus on.
My other comment is I do like the mix of houses. I think you did get the mix of, I think you got that right. I think the school struggled because they did a, they asked their employees and everyone said, I want a three or four-bedroom and this, that, and they couldn't rent any of them. And everyone said, oh, I want a three or four bedroom and this, that, and they couldn't rent any of them. And so I think, you know, you, you, you have to look at it as a, you know, the town has to look at it operationally as, you know, who am I going to be hiring? And, you know, and ideally, what we're doing is providing people housing for their first 10 or 15 years, and then they're in a covenant home and then they're in a real home or something else happens. I, I think, so we're not, you're not solving it all, all the segments at once. You're solving, you know, so many years. And I think that's, you know, I think you hit that right here. The other issue that's going to have to be dealt with is parking. And I, I am all, you know, when Tacoma Green happened, I was advocating for limiting each unit to one, you know, each one to one or charging for the parking spaces. And that isn't kind of what's happening. And so I think that has to be sort of thought through that we, you know, this property is too valuable to have it be a bunch of parking lots. As we see now, we need, that's three lots that we're turning into five. You know, it should be along the backside of the police. At some point should have housing for their police, you know, on that back edge. Even though it's a parking lot now, it's, it's sitting there ready. And I think there should be, you know, and all this other at some point is going to have town buildings and some, and other, if we're, if we're smart about it, we're not turning it into parking lots. So, you know, that's the, you know, long vision, you know? And I think we have to start that now by, you know, by saying, no, yeah, you can have one vehicle and here's your parking spot, you know? And if you want two, okay, we've got six here and you can, you know, you can get on the waiting list or you can bid for that with your other employees or something. Like we have to value the parking because if we just, if we don't, we're not going to have enough housing on this property and other properties to handle this. Anyway.
Done enough direction?
Yes, so we'll move forward with the OPM.
I think that's the consensus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town meeting timeline?
The town meeting timeline is not a whole lot different from last year since we're in the same general timeframe as we were last year. Just to take you quickly through this, you endorse it tonight. We start advertising next month for citizen articles, submittals. We continue with a bunch of, several meetings at, at which you'll be reviewing preliminary town-sponsored articles. We proceed with the town council consultation program. And citizen articles would be due on Monday, the 17th at 4:00. They still currently require the signatures of 10 registered voters. And sidebar, I'm working on an update of the citizen warrant article guide. We've had a guide online for some time now advising citizens how best to prepare a citizen warrant article. It seems that a lot of people don't read it, but it is there and we're working to revise it. So, anyway. Throughout November, December, early January, you'd be reviewing articles, adopting articles. FinCom would have a public hearing on citizen warrant articles mid-December-ish. And then January, February, very early March, FinCom and Planning Board are working on their motions. That all concludes the second week of March. And the board works on its comments. And we get the warrant out to the printer towards the end of March and mail it out mid-April and have town meeting on Monday, May 4th, starting at 4:30. That is the time we've been talking about. There are a few little bit of notes here that I like to remind people about. By charter, the warrant with motions must be mailed out to voters 14 days prior to town meeting. Due to mail issues in the past, we like to allow for additional time to get the warrants to the voters in that timely manner. I've listed the vacations and holidays there. We haven't added in the public outreach items yet. And the schedule does build in about a week that we could be a little bit flexible. That depends on the mailing date for the warrant. And we will be considering public notice publication in electronic media with general circulation in the town per vote at the 2025 town meeting on our warrant article. That has not passed the Attorney General's Office yet, but I don't see why it wouldn't. And happy to answer any questions about it.
Anybody? Is there a motion?
I move to endorse.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Next up, we have select board reports and comments. Vote to expand scope of African Meeting House Investigation Procurement Work Group to allow for monitoring progress at the investigation review. This was your request, Malcolm.
Yes, I mean, the working group, original mandate was to find someone to do an independent investigation. They've done that, selected a independent investigator at a reasonable cost, by the way. But the working group would like to continue to be involved in the process, however possible. Obviously not to do the investigation. Some people still have an image that the working group is investigator group. And I've tried to point out to them that that is not the case. But they would just like to have input along the way and know what's going on. That's their request.
Okay. Comments?
Question. Go.
I guess we've procured a firm, we've given them a scope of work. What, what is the pro, what is the, the idea is it's an independent investigation. So I would think it would go on. What does it look like? I guess, what does it look like if there's ongoing participation by the work group? I don't really know what role they could play.
Well, the investigation will.
The review of the investigation.
According to this company, would go relatively quickly.
Okay.
They would like to just have another meeting with the investigator and give their input on what they, what their thoughts about how it should go and answer any questions. I think that's essentially what I want. I just have to be very careful, though, they're not the investigators.
So.
I understand your question.
Yeah.
For the town side, who's, who owns it now? Who's, who's the town staff that's in charge of this now? Or town person? Is it you, Malcolm, or is it?
Well, I am the chairman. I would interact with the investigator along with the working group as much as possible. Maureen Coleman has sort of been the staff person to help us with that.
If I may, Madam Chair.
I mean, I'm quite capable of interacting with the investigator. Because it is a board mandated investigation as a representative of the board.
So I'm a little, I'm just a little confused about procurement and contracting. The contract is executed based on a scope of work that was defined and, and the procurement process happened. I know, I'm, I'm sort of having a flashback to the project with the HDC where a group seemed to alter the scope of work mid-project. And I think in terms of independence and credibility, I'm very concerned about amending the process in the process after we've gone. And Brian, maybe Brian, you can help me. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
I think so. I'm going to attempt to help. So the procurement was put out with kind of a general four corners of what the scope would look like so that they could quote the work. The contract was developed, the, we took a lot of the input from the work group and some of the things they wanted for, and I want to kind of clarify some. This is really a review of the investigation and a review of the materials and, and the documentation, the information, right? It's not a complete new investigation. So we have defined it. The, I think that the oversight responsibility actually is, falls within the board, at the board level to be in my, the way that I understand it. And I think the work group wanted to be the point of contact to, because they had invested so much time in this, I think is what the, and Malcolm can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but that was my understanding, is that they wanted to remain involved to the extent that they were the point of contact and could have a discussion or answer any questions about what they had been looking for. The scope of work was developed with some, with the help of town council that is in the contract. Ultimately, there still could be some type of negotiation about that scope. You can't, we cannot negotiate price out of this, but we could negotiate and they could discuss changes if there was questions at the contract the LCG had. But that's kind of where I think, I hope that answers your question a little bit clearer, I guess.
It actually helps me clarify where I'm going.
Okay.
I feel more comfortable having that, you and that group continue and to be available to answer questions from the firm that's doing the work. But, but weighing in on the ongoing work proactively makes me a little more uncomfortable. Do you understand the distinction?
I agree with that.
Yeah.
It's important that this, because the, the beauty of this is the investigator is an out-of-state person, company, actually, it's quite, it's quite a large company and it was quite impressive with their, with the tools that they have to, to offer. We don't want an investigation by people on the island because there's so much emotion already out there. So I think my job, if there would, would be to make sure that the work group can answer questions, but it's not the investigator.
But if the, so if the, but here's, so if the investigator has a question, if the new group has a question, who do they, who do they call? Do they call you or do they call the group?
Well, they'd call me, I would imagine. I mean, we could have a meeting infrequently where the investigator could ask questions of the group. But, I mean, your points are well taken.
And then here's my other thing. Let's say the investigation comes up with a report or a draft report.
Well, they will have a report.
Okay, and they hand you the report. What if the group doesn't like it? I've seen reports here that get scrubbed and then they become something different because someone's yelling and screaming and mad. And, and we change it. So are we going to do that with this report?
No, I'm very passionate about that because there's been a couple of reports in my three years here that we're supposed to go to the select board and somehow kind of never, never made it or got changed by the people who were issuing their, asking for the reports. The investigator will, will write a report and hopefully, and make a presentation to the board.
So, so.
I was just going to, so I think basically there needs to be a venue if they have a question.
Yes.
And that would go to you. But it's not the reverse. The work group is not going to intervene with the investigation by asking questions or leading anything. It is going to be the opposite, that if the investigator needs clarification, they can come to you. And if you need to convene a meeting, then you can do so to get further input. So if we're clear on that, I'm comfortable.
During the, some of the meetings, the CEO of the African American House was, was clear a couple of times where she kept reminding people not to interfere and, and not start investigating and leading the investigator.
Erica, sorry, so just clarification. The work group wouldn't continue having regular meetings. It would only post a meeting if there are questions from the investigative team.
Yeah, I was thinking of having, if you endorse going forward, I'd have a, a meeting, you know, maybe next Monday, our usual time, just to update the group where we are and then go away and let the investigator do the investigating.
I mean, we can do that by email.
The investigating, the investigating. It's a, it's an interesting concept. It's an investigation of the investigation.
So, I, can I make a motion for discussion? Okay. So I move that we can extend the duration of this work group for the express purpose of responding to inquiries from the procure, for the, from the firm for clarification on the intent and scope of the investigation only. And that any report produced by, as work product comes straight to the select board. It is not to be evaluated or amended by this group.
I'm comfortable with that.
And does the work group, oh, sorry.
That's a second.
Is that a second?
Yes, a second.
Sorry, my mic was off. Erica, did you have a question?
Well, I was just, I think informing the work group can easily be done by an email from staff.
Yes, I can write a nice note.
But, yeah, it's got to come through. Staff needs to send it out.
Yeah, I mean, I would, Maureen would, you know, I would work with her to send out a note to the work group that the select board met and that their continued function would be, when necessary, to get together to answer questions from the investigator. And any guidance I can give, I would give along the way.
I think it's important that they have input still and, and they're involved still. But I think it's important that the investigator does the investigating. So it's, you know, and it sounds like you guys are having those conversations internally in the group, correct?
Yes, yes. This, and this investigator, this investigator team is a pretty experienced savvy investigator. And I was actually, one of the things that impressed me personally about them is they had done a lot of homework before, when we entered, when we interviewed them. They, they knew an awful lot about the island. They knew an awful lot about the incident already and understood some of the complexities that we're dealing with.
Okay, can we go to a vote?
Yeah.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you. Next up, authorize cultural heritage partners to engage community claims fund administrator for Vineyard Wind Blade Failure Settlement. Just so you all know, Libby and I met with them on this. And, I mean, I think, I think it's a pretty solid plan for how to, how to go through the process. But I know they're, I think they're still on here if there's questions.
You don't want us to design it tonight? Sit here and make it up?
I don't think we have to labor for it too much. But they've been waiting for a while. If Will or Caitlin want to make any comments?
Thank you, Chair Hill and members of the select board. We're very pleased to be here tonight. And as you know, I'm joined by my colleague, Caitlin McCurdy. We are seeking approval tonight to engage the proposed administrator, Veris, and are, are very happy to make this recommendation. I'll turn the floor over to Caitlin just to very briefly provide an update and introduce Veris to the group. Veris has sent a few representatives tonight to answer any questions she might have.
Good evening, everyone. I know it's late. We'll keep this as quick as possible. To Will's point, the first step in implementing the Community Claims Fund under the G E V settlement would be to hire an administrator to develop and then manage the process. Will and I interviewed four different settlement administrators, reviewed their proposals. And we recommend that the select board authorize Cultural Heritage Partners to hire Veris. We were most impressed by the team at Veris and appreciated their engagement and creativity regarding the unique terms of the fund. Veris brings both a depth of experience in complex settlement administration, but also has specific experience handling COVID-related business disruption claims that presented nuances in the adjudication process that we anticipate would be similar to some of the claims that would be filed here. We found their team to be creative, flexible and thoughtful in how the claims process could be tailored to Nantucket residents. Their total estimated project cost was $106,900. Their total estimated project cost was $106,900. That cost was competitive based on the discussions and review of other proposals. And as you could see in the summary, included the, all of the different components of the settlement process. We would anticipate coming back at a future meeting for Veris, if engaged, to outline a, a specific process and timeline for the claims fund. We would love to turn it over to Mark and Chris, who are representatives from Veris. We thought it might be helpful for you to have some faces to put to names. And I believe they're still on.
We are still here, Caitlin. I believe Chris is here as well.
Absolutely.
It is a pleasure to meet you all tonight. I'll let, I'll let Chris start it off and then I'll add color commentary as necessary.
Sure, yeah. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Caitlin, Will, and the select board of the town of Nantucket. My name is Chris Edvard. I'm the sales manager for Veris LLC. Joining me on the call is Mark Eblin, our founder, chief strategy officer and chairman of the board. So thank you for those kind words, Caitlin and Will, introducing us. As they alluded to, we are a claim and settlement administration company founded in 2004. We bring a wealth of experience into the industry, having specialized in this space for over 20 years now. We have over 8.7 million claims managed with more than eight billion claim, eight billion, excuse me, in claims awarded, distributed. We also have proven expertise in developing these strategies around administration processes. So this is strictly within our wheelhouse. Since we were founded, we've been responsible for roughly eight million claims across mass tort and class action settlements and managed distribution to claimants of over 8.7 billion, unliquidated claims of over 70 billion. So this is exactly what we specialize in, want to do. We've had very detailed conversations with Will and Kate regarding this project and we're very excited about what we possibly deliver to help you guys on both sides, specifically the distribution of the funds. Speaking specifically to Veris's expertise in this space, we have a wealth of experience primarily originating in the asbestos space, but we have worked across the gambit of mass tort and class action. Specifically, a few years ago, the COVID business losses case had some stark similarities to the current situation facing the town of Nantucket. And I think Mark can elaborate more on that piece and how exactly we were able to resolve that problem and how we would really tailor the solution to the current situation in front of us.
Thanks, Chris. And just a little brief introduction on me. Before founding the firm, I actually worked in designing and developing large-scale settlement programs for about a dozen years prior to 2004. Those settlements ran the gamut from product liability cases, securities cases, as well as personal injury cases. But specifically, the thing that, that we find most interesting about this case is the similar, similarities to work that we did during the COVID pandemic. While it was not a settlement arrived at by, through litigation, you may be aware that in 2000 and late 2020, Congress passed a piece of legislation that established a compensation program for businesses that had, that had, had suffered severe disruptions to their operations as a result of the, the various impacts of the COVID pandemic, including government orders in many regions of the country to shut their businesses down if they were not deemed to be essential businesses. We created a program to help small businesses in the most impacted industries navigate the regulations around that program and prove that their, that their eligibility for those funds to keep their businesses alive through the pandemic met all of the rules and regulations established by the Internal Revenue Service for those funds. It has many things in common with what we're seeing here in this situation where you have small businesses impacted by a business disruption for different reasons behind that disruption, but still many of the central, essential same elements of establishing damages here. Having worked with many, with hundreds of small businesses on, on that government program, we know that the record-keeping of small businesses runs the gamut from sophisticated to not so sophisticated. And we developed through our work with those businesses over the course of three or four years of working on that project, nuanced decision trees around the, the types of evidence necessary to establish the extent of the damages and the various other elements proved. So I know it's been a long meeting. I will not talk any further, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that anyone on the board may have.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. Any questions?
No, I mean, I, I, the work that they've done, because this is not going to be necessarily easy. And I think the point they made about small businesses' record-keeping being very, quite varied and having the ability to sort of figure out how to make it possible for someone, how to help a claimant verify the losses and the eligibility for the funds. And I think that will instill confidence in the community that the allocations are fair and reasonable and deserved. And, and that's been the whole point of this settlement was to make sure that our small businesses, our businesses that had losses related to the turbine blade failure get compensated. And that, that's why we secured this settlement. So I'm, I'm happy to move forward with this.
Will Libby, I guess I have a question. Will Libby, like, will we, when will we find out what kind of the standard is and how it's going to be administered? Like, is that on sort of the next step? Once they're hired, then they come to us with that? Okay.
Yes.
All right. I'm good.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to authorize CHP to engage Veris to establish and execute the process.
And second from that, all those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Are there any committee reports?
If I might, I just wanted to say that, that yesterday, I think it was around a dozen of us testified both in person and online at the hearing on our home rule petition for the transfer fee. And I want to express publicly my gratitude to everyone who testified and in particular to the Housing Department for their organization of the testimony. We didn't, we didn't talk over each other. We repeated salient points, but, but they sort of made sure that so many different voices and perspectives were represented in the testimony. And it was, I believe, the most powerful version of this that we've done in the years that I've been doing it. And I'm grateful for the folks who took the time, sitting on Zoom, waiting for our turn. And just, and Dylan, just a shout out to Dylan. He coordinated a lot of it. And, and, and we, we left, Berta Scott did the last testimony and left that panel hearing the very emotional reality of our housing crisis. And we did a lot of data and a lot of that, but, but, you know, there were Forrest Bell. There were a couple of people who really brought home the personal nature of our housing crisis. And I, I think it had a great impact. And I'm, I'm always optimistic when we go into this process, but I'm more optimistic this year than ever.
Did the legislatures listen this time?
This, this chair was the most engaged, most, I would say. You know, listen, I'm chair, Don's been chair. When you get public comment, you're saying thank you for your comment. But, but what he said to Berta at the ad was something along the lines of, "Thank you for, for, for taking the opportunity to share your story with us." And to me, that felt like he heard that it was a personal story and not just wah, wah, wah. So thanks to everybody who pitched in.
Is there a second?
Happily.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's unanimously.
That's just Don. This is my favorite comment of the night.